Where's Jennifer? Where'd she go? Jennifer, how do you say your last name? Okay, thank you. Batondo's not garbage.
Yeah, he is. He didn't tell us that.
But it might not be garbage, but yeah. Never mind. The mics are on. The mics are on. Did you show them?
Yes, there.
We were arguing about whether the mics were on or not. Is it time? Yep. All right, we call this meeting to order. Roll call, please. Vice Mayor Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Sandu.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
And Mayor Lamson. Here. Are we not doing the black side? Okay. Would you read the public comment, please? Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk. Then you have these. I have to say, it's great to see so many people here. This is a very important thing we're going over tonight, and it's nice to see all the interest. All right, first up, we have Bonnie Rodriguez, representing the chamber on trash.
Good evening, and I know we're not quite on the topic, except for that our topic does depend on your budget. I'm going to pass around in each particular a map. Kara's going to show so that everyone can see. Last week, just so everyone's aware, R3, the consultant hired by the city, sent out a comparison city chart. And this on the map are the cities that Galt was compared to for their trash. Anyone else can see a problem with this map? But obviously, Galt is not in the Bay Area.
Bonnie, you might go along.
I think it is on.
It's on.
All right. Hopefully, we can start this over. But this map, if you haven't guessed, this is the cities that our consultants, who I'm sure were paid a hefty price, compared our commercial trash rates to. Obviously, we all know that we don't live in the Bay Area. So you can, I hope you understand the disappointment that the city, or that the chamber and all the businesses have. I know that you guys were sent the report to. Well, I'm assuming you were sent the report. But a map was not included in that report, and maybe just looking at the numbers, you didn't really realize where those cities were. So I wanted to make it very visual that this is who we're compared to. This is where these rates are coming from. And quite frankly, the first words out of my mouth after seeing this was, I am so embarrassed to be living in Galt right now. I cannot believe that this came out of City Hall. Cannot believe this was sent to try to represent and defend the city's position in these trash rates. Because this is not Galt. This is, we are not the Bay Area. But let's dig a little deeper, which I did. Let's take some of these entities, and I looked them up to see, let's compare, maybe there is something to compare. So I looked up the median home price of these homes in some of these. Needless to say, Galt's median home price was the lowest, sitting at about $360,000. The top one, in Belvedere, is $3.4 million. Over 12 of those entities have median home prices well over $1 million, and about another six or seven that are just below $1 million. So then I thought, well, let's look at the median household income. Galt was not at the bottom. Yay, Galt. We were not at the bottom. There was two or three right below it. We are down about $54,000 for our household income. The highest one, again, Belvedere, they set at almost $215,000 for their median home price. These are the people what we're supposed to be able to compete price-wise with? There's no way. So then I thought, well, let's get a feel for the business economy in there, in those areas. And this is where I got really angry, and then I kind of stopped after a while. Oakland is one of those lovely cities that we're compared to. I pulled up their sales tax revenue for last year. $54 million, sales tax revenue. Galt's sitting somewhere around $2 million. And not including the market revenue, $2 million. We're compared to 54 million. So I started looking up some other comparable ones, or some other of these comparison, apples-to-apples comparisons. And I'll just try to cut it short and just go straight to the jugular here. One of the ones I looked up was Belvedere. Since they seem to be at the top of the list of everything else, I thought, well, they'll have an interesting number. Their sales tax revenue for last year was $64,000. Thousand, not million, thousand. Why? So I went and looked it up. Does anybody know anything about Belvedere? It's basically a gated community that their CCNRs do not allow businesses in. So please tell me what R3, what commercial prices they were comparing. And then I ran across a couple other communities out there that we were compared against that were very similar. Either no businesses at all, or just a handful. And we all know the Bay Area. You don't know when you've left one city into the other, for the most part. So all of those businesses are, it's a cost-sharing or a revenue-sharing that's going on out there. We don't revenue-share with anybody. We have, you can ask Amy, we have so much sales tax leakage, Judge, is, that if we have to start raising even more prices here just to pay our trash, we're going to lose even more. Everyone is losing in this. The city, the residents, everyone. So you can imagine how angry and how disappointed we were in this. Disappointed that the city didn't shove this back at R3 and say, try again? Or, better yet, fire them? Because they brought us into this. And I, for the life of me, can't figure out how BBK supported this and sent this out to us. This is embarrassing. And I know you five sitting up there, you're not part of the everyday workings, and I don't even know that you knew any of this happened. But, you know, the businesses are getting very frustrated. Very frustrated. For the last several months, they've been paying these outrageous prices for garbage, and we're getting nowhere. Nowhere. Cal Waste hasn't even come forward. I mean, they sit back and are very quiet. And I'll go ahead and stop right now for your six seconds.
Okay, next up is Ralph Cortez, with Representative Chamber, on trash.
Madam Mayor, council members, staff, I would like to yield my time to Ms. Rodriguez. Thank you.
Thank you, and I promise this will be the last time I'm up here.
If I could, just before you begin, the mayor has the ability to decide whether you want to give additional time. We don't actually have a procedure in the rules for yielding time, so I just want to make sure that the mayor has an opportunity to address that process and whether she's going to allow that this evening.
So if it's all right with the rest of the council, because Ms. Rodriguez is representing such an important group of businesses in town, if she takes not five minutes?
Okay, thank you. Can we start the five minutes over again then? I stopped it. Okay, thank you.
We'll start it again. Can we, hold on.
Okay, so I do want to draw, I didn't print this out really big. In fact, I almost needed a magnifying glass to read it. But on this comparison rate, all that it compared were three-yard waste bins for commercial, or three-yard, whatever you call them. What they compared, what they said they compared were three-yard, the three-yard, which includes a 96-gallon recycling, which ours does, and a 64-gallon organics. Ours does not. We all know that. Ours does not. But those are the numbers that you see here. So, which was interesting. So Galt falls about number 19 on that list. Out of 45, Galt is number 19. If, the 96-gallon organic bin in Galt is a minimum of $85 a month. So if you add that $85 to our overall price, that actually moves Galt up to in the top 10 in price structure for the Bay Area. And I don't think I have to tell anybody how hard it is to move around in the Bay Area in your vehicle. Can you imagine those big trucks? They're not anywhere facing the difficulties here in Galt to take care of our garbage and recycling as they do in the Bay Area. How on earth, how is this justified? How is anybody who is associated with putting these numbers together walking without being embarrassed? We have, we're destroying Galt. I do, I also want to read, and I hate to do this because I'm usually not, I throw people under the bus, but in the email that was sent from our city attorney to our attorney, to the chamber's attorney, this is what it says. According to R3, the attachment shows a range of rates that are equitably compliant, meaning that the rates shown are not the actual published rates for a given jurisdiction, but rather a comparable rate after adjusting for various fees and services for the given jurisdiction. Well, it didn't even adjust ours. I have no confidence in any of those numbers whatsoever. But then it gets better and says, the idea was to try to be able to provide as close to an apples-to-apples rate comparison as possible. I don't know where they're getting their apples from, but ours are not golden here. Theirs may be in the Bay Area, I don't know. But they certainly are not comparable. So, you know, the chamber, we've been very patient. We've sat in meetings. We've gone back and forth in emails. I don't know that the public knows that, but we have been, I've been up here, the public certainly knows that, probably tired of seeing me. But it's, you know, we're tired, and we're done. If this is the quality of attention that we're going to get this report, we're done. We asked you politely move these rates back to what they were before until we can work out. This is something, but no, we didn't get that. Then we were asked, okay, let's be fair. Or then we asked, let's be fair. Cal Waste has commercial customers in Elk Grove. Elk Grove's compliant, so just charge our commercial customers for the time being what Elk Grove is being charged by Cal Waste. That's fair. Cal Waste is charging them. We're not asking for anybody else's numbers. Cal Waste. Nothing. I don't even know that they've been approached with it, because Cal Waste didn't come to the table. But it would be nice to know what their response was, if they even have a response. But in this whole time, our businesses are paying out the nose every month for this, for no response. So, right now, I am asking, first of all, for the five of you to take the city back. You guys are supposed to be the ones in control, and I think you've trusted, and I, staff, they're, got their hands everywhere, I get it. But you need to take the city back from Cal Waste. They're holding us, your businesses hostage. And they're sitting back being quiet and holding them hostage, and you guys are looking the fools. As your businesses go out of business and leave the city, please take it back. Please do something. And so our last request is, take the commercial side of refuse and do an open market. Let the market dictate what the price is. If two other companies come in and they're charging the exact same price, then I'm going to throw out my hands, and I guess we're all screwed. But I can guarantee you, it's not going to be that price. You let two other companies at least come in and bid for each of these businesses' attention, it's going to be cheaper, and you will keep businesses in your borders. Thanks.
Just have a question.
Mr. Mike, come on.
After reviewing the report, did you contact staff to get clarification on any portion of it? I mean, did you have any discussions with staff with regards?
Our attorney, I think, reached out today.
Today? But you haven't, you didn't?
We got it Thursday, or I got it Thursday, late in the evening, saw it Friday, and then have had the weekend to try to go through this. So no. The answer to your question is no.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Kara Morris. Doesn't say who she's with, on the trash rates.
Good evening, councilmembers. A few weeks ago, a handful of us from the Chamber of Commerce and our attorney met with the city manager, Tom Hagland, and the city attorney, Kimberly Hood. And we sat down to discuss, hopefully, a resolution of the colossal trash rate increase given to our businesses from Cal Waste. During that meeting, Mr. Hagland agreed to do a comparable report of trash rates of the surrounding communities. Nearly three weeks later, our attorney received an email from Ms. Hood that contained the comparable report from R3 Consulting. This report compared Galt to cities in the Bay Area, for example, like what Bonnie said, Belvedere, where their median home value is actually over $3.4 million. Google that one. That's comparing apples to oranges, Rolls Royces to Ford Pintos. This explains why the contract with Cal Waste was signed. And I'm sorry to attack you. Ms. Hood, you should be ashamed and embarrassed. I'm embarrassed for you. I'm embarrassed to say I'm a part of this community because of this report being accepted. It should have just been given right back to R3, saying, I'm sorry, this is comparing apples to oranges. We need a good comparison, apples to apples. So, I mean, what were you thinking? Do you think Galt, do you think we're that dumb that we would just accept this type of data? And my tax dollars, your tax dollars, your tax dollars paid for this report? And the city, what are we here for this evening? The city is in a financial crisis, and we're paying for this type of report? So councilmembers, if you are in acceptance of this comparable report, and you don't act on it, then you are going to lose credibility, respect, and trust within our community. I feel that the law firm of BBK and the R3 Consulting Group should be fired by the city of Galt. They're incompetent. So city council, I look forward to the day that you put a resolution on your agenda for the trash rate increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Next up will be Daniel Batondo. Doesn't say who he's representing, then. After that will be Jennifer Steiglmeier, and after that, Ray Patel.
How's it going, everybody? I'm Dan Batondo, longtime listener, first-time caller.
Galt resident?
Yeah, new Galt resident. But I've been around the area since 1989, so I've known this town pretty well. Lived just outside the city limits, but recently moved into Old Town, so. Weren't some pretty deep stuff here. We're having to make cuts to programs, parks, but the salaries for those responsible continue to creep ever higher. We've watched for years as our elected officials have let spending go off the rails with no oversight, no reprimands, no audits, no heads rolling. The jobs of the city council is oversight and direction. We've entrusted you to make sure that there is not only enough money coming in as going out, but to make smart decisions to grow our city so that we can move forward into the future. Those councils of the past have failed us. This one is fighting to keep its head above water. Here's how you afford programs without cuts. You grow your sales tax base. You grow your sales tax base by not being hands-down the most anti-business city around. The garbage deal will slowly eat away at businesses in this town. It's the council's job to make sure the most competitive bid is obtained and agreed upon. It's your responsibility to do so to secure the best deal for residents and local businesses. Were multiple bids obtained? No. Previous council decided that it wanted to do away with competitive bids for whatever nonsensical reason. How are you going to obtain the best price if you don't shop around? That's rule number one. That's day one, chapter one stuff. The council has failed in this regard. I've yet to hear a convincing argument for why this wasn't put out to bid. One former council member even went as far as spouting off that they blindly assumed that it was a good deal without doing any due diligence. For years, we've watched as the Parks and Rec Department has been spending on speculative income, which has continuously fallen short each and every year. How much do we have to endure before we realize that's not a tenable approach? When will the city look forward to the future and realize they've done nothing to change with the times and haven't diversified or evolved whatsoever? These bad decisions start at the top. We, the community, are the top. We decide who is in power, so the blame rests with us. For years, we've entrusted the wrong people to direct this city in the right direction. We throw someone out of the office saying, this idiot doesn't know what they're doing. Let's try this one. Then four years later, we're throwing that person out for the same thing. We've allowed the failures of our past collective choices to dig us one hell of a hole. Now, it's time for us all to band together and dig our way out. The parks need tending, and we don't have the money to do it. It's time for the Parks and Rec to allow our citizens, who pay with their tax money for these parks anyways, to put in some sweat equity and clean them up ourselves. Some groups have already been contacted, and we're ready. As for services, for now, we know some will have to be cut, and that's the nature of the beast. There should be a moratorium on all wage increases across the board. All departments should be audited. No longer should we base spending on perceived income. Non-pertinent services should be cut for the time being, which is a tough pill to swallow, but necessary. We're all going to have to get lean to pay for the mistakes made by our past elected officials. We elected them. What do you expect when you elect a person who probably bankrupted the concilio to multiple terms? The time for electing your brother, your friend's brother, or the lady that lives around the corner from you is over. It's time for making educated decisions on who you're marking on your ballot. It's time for common sense conservation, and for every single one of us to get our hands dirty. This town has always had two things, our pride and our illusions. The time for illusions is over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Batondo. Next up?
Okay, thank you.
Next up, Ray Patel. Subject, Cal Waste.
Good evening, all. So after several months, now we are here at square one. None of you guys taking this seriously. And just for your, for Ms. Attorney, Mr. Manager here, and Donna, the clerk, right? They get paid out of your guys' money, taxpayer money. You guys hire them, right? So you, Thomas, Mr. Thomas, you promised me you will work on it. Look, what, where we are at. You, I sell homes for a living, you know? So when even you sell the house in the north of Galt versus east of Galt versus west of Galt, there's a comparison, right? You pick one house, then there is, then you pick one house, the bank won't even loan until you get comp. Look, what are you comparing? Like, even in, even certain areas, a gated community, 500, 5,000 square feet versus some other one, like million dollar versus 200,000. What are you comparing? What are you doing? If I go in a court in front of judge, what they will say? Come on, they will give a judgment. Come on, what, when you, we are to literally sue you to get what we want? Come on, think about it. City is paying you to give them honest advice. Honest advice, okay? You went to law school to give them advice that, Mr. Manager, you need to manage the city. They pay you. Even though you're interim, your degree is used wisely and give them good advice. Do not throw away city's money when, when every single city in America going up, from that point, we only going to go down, not up. Right now, we are in $4 million hole. What are you guys doing? This poor, hard-working people, community with work capital income, how many times we elated, people need to explain you? You have to understand, this is, you literally want us to sue you guys just because you have a lousy contract? Who cares for the contract? Just do what you have to do. Yeah, really, seriously. Yeah, because you signed the wrong contract, that doesn't mean that you cannot keep dragging us into the thing. We just asking you to get an open market, bring, compared to Cal Waste, Waste Management, few other company, bring them on the table. None of you guys doing that. You hire the same company, who's also subject to be lawsuit, because why, what they're comparing? These to Bay Area, not even to Stockton, they cannot go, not to Lowdy. They want to go here in Bay Area, where one house here is 200,000, that same house in $3 million? You kidding me? You guys need to think about it. You guys going to force us to sue the city, which is you guys as us. We are you. This is wrong. This is dirty, you know, this is going to be, as it is, you guys are 4 million now, next thing you know, you'll be 6 million in a hole because of lawsuit. Where are you going to get the money? Think about it. That's all I had to say. I don't know when you guys going to wake up.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. I'm going to wait for the other public speakers till after the presentation, since you guys want to speak on the budget. So we'll wait till after the presentation so we have all the information. All right. So Department Financial Sustainability Plan, Review of Expenditure Reduction Recommendations. Mr. Hagland.
Mayor Lamson, members of the council, good evening. We are here for the fifth meeting since May 15th of this year to discuss the city's budget and the issues related to deficits in several of our funds. We first met on May 15th to review modifications to the midterm budget that, and we highlighted then, the status of the general fund, the status of the Parks and Rec Fund, the status of the Lighting Landscape District Funds, that all give rise to a very significant deficit in our general fund. The general fund has to cover deficits in each of those. So we met and reviewed that on May 15th. We adopted some modifications to the budget on June 4th, and we agreed that we were going to come back and develop a financial sustainability plan. And we did so, meeting on July 17th, July 27th, or July 31st, excuse me, and August 27th. And so some of this presentation that you and the public will see tonight is going to be, feel a little similar to what you've seen before, in some cases. And yet, we have new members of the public, either here tonight, or perhaps watching on the internet, or perhaps going to bring up the meeting later to view it then. And so I ask your patience as I walk through a few of these slides that you've seen before for the benefit of those who haven't seen them but can get an explanation as to what they're going to see. And away we go. So the city's sustainability project is really centered on the obvious. We're spending beyond our means. We've opted We've operated a structural deficit for a number of years. And when the, the city adopted the FY '19 and FY '20 budget, the FY '19 budget we just concluded this past June 30th, and the FY '20 budget, which started on July 1, it adopted budgets that, or a general fund budget, that had a 4 million deficit over, over those two years. And as we have been talking, it's time for the council, staff, and the community to commit ourselves to a more sustainable approach. So, how will financial sustainability occur? We've talked about the fact that we have to focus on the long term. We have to focus on revenues as well as expenses. And for the long term, we have defined those things as issues that are going to require much deeper levels of review and analysis and, and decision-making on the part of the council to look, especially over the long term, at additional areas of revenue. And that particular point will become more clear as we go down a few slides. We'll also focus on midterm options. Those issues that we cannot unilaterally take an action regarding, because we either are parties to agreements, and it takes two, when you're under an agreement, it takes two to agree, to make a change to an active agreement. Or, they require other levels of analysis that are beyond the short-term period, which I'll get to in a minute, that, in, in order to determine how we can cut expenses, or in the short term, are there issue, potential revenue options in this, this midterm. And so, midterm can be anywhere from six months, four, six months, a year, something that allows us to get through that, that period of either negotiation or review and analysis and, and getting something out, especially as it revolves around revenue options, getting it out to the public for consideration. And then, finally, we'll focus tonight on the, especially tonight, on the short-term efforts. And those I have described to you as those unilateral actions that you can take immediately in order to trim expenditures. These, these short-term actions focus almost exclusively on short-term, or, or, excuse me, expenditure reductions for FY '20. And the idea is that we take those actions to stop the bleeding now, to bring our general fund budget into balance, as we pursue midterm and long-term courses of action to address all the funds, Parks and Rec, lighting landscaping, as well as the general fund. So, the purpose of this meeting, this is the third of the, the four meetings I, I highlighted on the financial sustainability plan. We're at August 27th. On September 3rd, you'll give consideration to the items that we ultimately review towards the end of the presentation tonight. And as I have indicated, time is of the essence, because the further we move into the fiscal year, the, 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 the more expenditures we may end up making that will be more difficult to recover from. The ground rules for this presentation are changed somewhat from where we were before. Of course, the purpose is to review where we're at. I'll be highlighting some long-term options, some midterm options, and I'll discuss my recommendations for short-term cost elimination. We'll recognize, and I ask you to recognize, and the community as well, that none of these cost reductions come easy. None of them are anything that any one of us wants to stand up and make to you. When you asked me to take on this interim role in April of this year, I did so, but I did so under the condition that I, I'm, I'm able to provide you with my unvarnished view of, of where we're at. It's taken some time for me to get through the budget, to get through all of the mechanics that make up our budget. We're going to talk about some of those mechanics tonight, because they're important. And some of the mechanics have been weakened over the years, and they shouldn't have been. And it's time that we make them stronger, so that we can better protect the general fund of a city that obviously you, as the council, live in, the community lives in, I live in, that I have a vested interest, clearly, in this city having a, a strong financial base over the long term. So, none of these come easy. Ask questions. That's really the order of the day, is ask questions. There, the only way to become informed, as, as we get into the, the, the issues that make up our budget, and especially with Parks and Rec and general fund and lighting landscaping is a focus, is to, to ask questions. Because the, the, the truth will set you free. It will give you that ability to very clearly see that action needs to be taken, and that we, we need to perhaps make decisions we otherwise wouldn't, for the, at least for the time being, while we explore a, a way to make our budget healthier over the long term. And ultimately, tonight, you'll discuss these ideas, and you will provide us with some direction. And one of the things that I hope that the council will discuss a little more tonight is the notion of core versus non-core services. And we've talked about it along the way. This has been a, a review slide now for a couple of our sessions. And core services are those that are either mandated by law or related to public health and safety, and that communities, when they incorporate, they take those things on as a matter of obligation for their community. You can think of police and public works. You can think of finance and community development, related to both ensuring that the, the, the funds of the, that are provided by the taxpayer and the public, and by the federal government, and by the state government to us, are adequately protected, that we develop in accordance with the law, that we develop in accordance with the general plan, that our community helps set forth for us, things like that. Non-core are the services, are those that are desired. We like them. They may help us better define who our community is, what we are as a community. The, it, it may be things like libraries or parks and recreation programming, elective boards or appointed boards that help to inform you on, on matters. But it may even be some of the things we do in a core service department, police department. There are oftentimes specialized units. They aren't a core service, but they help to better assist the community, either in protecting itself or in engaging itself. And it makes sense to have folks in, in, say, a police department or a public works department work on those things. But those, in the end, may not be core services. They may not be the thing we absolutely have to do. And yet, cities can determine ultimately what is a core service and what is not a core service. It's up to you. You're the elected leadership. You listen to the community. You take the advice of staff, or you listen to the advice of staff, and you wrestle with how best to make your decision. And we're here as a staff to serve you, to serve the community, just as you're up there to serve the community. So, if we're to define fiscal sustainability, we would probably first start with what is sustainability? And sustainability is the ability to maintain at a certain rate or level. The ability to maintain at a certain rate or level. Fiscal sustainability, or public finance sustainability, is the ability of the government to sustain its current spending, tax, and other policies over the long run, without threatening insolvency or the inability to pay for those promised services. And I can assure you that what fiscal sustainability is not, is a one-and-done mentality. On September 3rd, you were to adopt all the recommended cuts. You still won't be done. You can't rest on your laurels and believe that even with no increases on the personnel side, or something like that, that CPI itself won't creep up and get you. It's the magic of compounding. Sustainability, fiscal sustainability is not maintaining a failed or failing status quo. Fiscal sustainability is not maintaining a failed or failing status quo, and it's not a short-term proposition, it's a long-term commitment. So, let's look at our long-range financial plan. This is the very thing that the, the staff had, had prepared for you. I think you had seen it even prior to my arrival, but this is the window to the future. It's what our future looks like if we don't take action. And so, for the benefit of the council's review, for the benefit of the public, the blue line on top is our general fund. And we can see that as a general fund left to its own devices, not having to cover deficits anywhere else within the city's structure, the general fund is generally okay. The gold bar, the solid gold bar, is the lighting landscape districts. And those are beginning to slide into their own insolvency. But the elephant in the room, for all of us, whether we like it or not, and I don't like saying it, I'm sure you don't like hearing it, but it's the truth, it's indisputable, the elephant in the room for how we finance our city is the solid green line, that drops over time to a, more than a cumulative $8 million in the hole, drawing all that time in order to pay the bills from the general fund. And so, if we're to look at where we're at today, that's FY '20. Fiscal year '20 will end on July, or, excuse me, June 30th, 2020. And on July 1st, 2020, we start fiscal year '21. So, if we want to look at a one-year legacy without doing anything, we go from where we're at here, at a, almost $3 million in the hole, to more than $3 million in the hole, just in the span of a year. And if we want that to be our legacy, then we do nothing. But then, we end, you know, June 30th, 2020, we then march into the next fiscal year. We go into July and August, September, October, and November 2020. And without doing anything, our legacy deepens. It worsens. It's more on the order of 5 million, or close to 5 million in deficit. So then, if we add FY '22 to the mix, yet another fiscal year without doing anything, you, you, you see the picture, you get the point. And by the time we're in the fall of 2022, without doing anything to that green line, we will have fallen more than, we will spent more than $8 million of our general fund in support of other funds in deficit. And by 2024, this, this dashed line, that's what's happening to your general fund. This is the blue line up here, being pulled down by the landscape assessment districts and by the Parks and Recreation Fund. And so, by 2024, without doing anything, without taking action and redefining a, a new paradigm, we'll run out of general fund money. And we don't want that. So, the threat to the general fund is the continued loss of market revenues that threatens the Parks and Recreation Fund. And we'll talk about that in a graphic in just a minute. Increases in Parks and Recreation costs. So, while we have lost a tremendous amount of money in the last 15 years over, in, in terms of revenue, we have also had the increasing costs, whether it's just natural increases, minimum wage, CPI, our maintenance contracts, which we put out for competitive bid going up, they, they typically increase every year. And over that time, we have added more than $800,000 to expenses of, of the department as a whole. That's the entirety of Parks and Rec. And failure to replace that increased revenue is going to continue those deficits and continue to force the general fund, the only other fund that can pay the bill, it's the only other fund in all the city that can pay the bill, it will force the general fund to do that until we run out of money. So, here's what we're about to review. With that as the backdrop, we're about to go over some long-term options. And I'm starting with long-term first. That's gonna, that will, will lead to, to, to short-term. We've always had it in reverse order, short, mid, long. But I want to go over long-term first, because it's, it's really about information, not specific proposals. And for the community, what I'm about to go over in long-term options, or, is information, not specific proposals. But it's all information we need to go through in order to frame how we're going to solve the ultimate short-term cuts that, that are recommended tonight. So, also review midterm, we'll go over all my short-term recommendations, and we'll receive council direction. So, we looked at a graph, didn't have a lot of numbers on it, but it, but they were there, and, and the, the graph itself told a very compelling story. And so, for the council and the public here tonight, those who will view this later, we started last year, the last fiscal year, with $10 million, $10,500,000 fund balance. And from that, we had to pay some bills, and some deferred loans, some, some other non-spendable prepaid's and inventory costs that we had, a subsidy to the Northeast Area Lighting Landscape District. And we had for, this was a bill for FY '18 that carried forward a deficit in Parks and Recreation. And then, this last number, this 4.4 million, it's in brackets, it takes away from fund balance, but it's actually a savings account. It's where the council carved off an emergency reserve. And so, that is held as your emergency reserve today. But it dropped that $10 million, $10 and a half million fund balance to 4.8 million. Then, we have revenues coming into the general fund of 11.5 million, some transfers in, where the general fund recovers for, for services rendered to other funds of about 2.6 million. Then, we had expenses of 14, more than 14 and a half million. We had some capital improvement of 400,000. We had payments out of the general fund to other funds, where they provided some service to the general fund, essentially. And then, we had a subsidy in the West Side Lighting Landscape District, that 1.4 million subsidy in FY '19 to the Parks and Recreation Department, and some deferred maintenance. And that cut, that available fund balance from 4.8 to 2.4 million, it's a big cut. And so, we start this year, FY '20, with that same 2.4 million. We'll have our revenue in, our revenue out, and unless we make changes to these negative numbers, we'll end up on June 30, next year, with 777,000 left in general fund balance. And it, and yet, we, we'll still have our 4.4, but let's go backwards real quick. So, at the end of FY '20, we haven't made changes to how these lines affect this line, and pick this up. We're gonna, we're gonna be headlong towards insolvent, well, I shouldn't say insolvency, towards spending through all of our money in the general fund, both in available fund balance and in your rainy day fund by FY '24. So, that's what those numbers mean. This is the Parks and Recreation Fund summary, and it really talks about, in, in FY '19, the, the most recently completed fiscal year, you see that same payment that was made to, or, the deficit in the fund balance, and that is the same number back on the previous slide, where the general fund covered that deficit. And it also covered some, some of those non-spendable prepaid's were related to this fund. So, in all, the general fund contribution for last fiscal year, or for, that was from FY '18, by the way, was 1 point, $1 million. And we go through the revenues in. And we go through the revenues in. The next slide will break that out between market and other revenues. We go through the contributions. See, that 1.4 million now comes in as revenue, essentially, to the Parks and Rec Fund. And then we have all the remainder expenses. We leave the fund, we basically put enough in from the general fund to leave a fund balance of $100. And the same thing is happening in FY '20, where the contribution from the general fund, in order to keep the Parks and Rec Fund at a balance of $100, will be $1.2 million. And here it is broken out. Here is Parks and Recreation generally, so think parks, maintenance, think recreation programs. These are for all the rentals we make of a facility or income that we, you know, fees we charge for recreation programming and things like that. Down here are all of the expenses for such. And this slide is really meant to break out the market. So the market's gross revenue, about 2.585 million, about 2.6 million. And it makes a contribution of about 1.2 million back over to the recreation side in order to fund programs. But in all, when we come down, the market itself has costs of operation. We pay the same trash rates, we pay the same, we pay, we have over 477,000 of that is in part-time help that runs that market from 4:00 in the morning till 9:00 at night on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. And we have part-time people there on Mondays as well, as the market opens up and gears up and vendors come in and the like. And so it's a costly operation when we go through everything, you know, materials and supplies, you know, the budget for toilet paper and paper towel and soap and everything it takes to clean the market and take care of that on a weekly basis. It all adds up. And so ultimately, when you extend all these costs, or all these values over, we see that we're taking in about a total of 4.6 million, and we're spending a total of 4.6 million. So we'll turn to some long-term revenue possibilities. Again, information, not specific proposals. This is where we've just been. We talked about all the general fund revenues and all the market revenues. This is just a slide that shows that. It's just another way of displaying where our revenue comes from. And so we see on the general fund side, it's property tax, it's transient occupancy tax, hotel tax, sales tax, we have some other taxes, utility franchises, et cetera. We have the GALT market. We have charges for services, service licenses and permits and things like that. We have some miscellaneous types of revenue, something not neatly categorized. It may not be the same every year or come from the same place. We have an other revenue category of fines, forfeitures, penalties, interest, refund, things like that that make up all of those revenue categories back here. And that has the assigned dollar figures for each of those categories. So when we talk about revenue enhancements, one of the first things to understand is a little bit about property tax. Because everybody pays property tax, one way or another. Even if you're a renter, you're probably paying property tax in lieu because you're paying rent, right? Landlord's paying the property tax. If you're a homeowner or a business owner, you're paying property tax. In GALT, the average property tax per capita is $92. The average in the county is 136. You can see a disparity there already, mostly centered around home values. Another way to look at that is, another way to slice and dice it is to say that 21 cents out of every property tax dollar paid in GALT comes to the city of GALT. The rest goes to the state of California. Well, or the county, I should say. So there are some potential ways to naturally raise property tax, the amount that is actually coming in. And we have more than 2,500 units, housing units, that are, that have either been approved or 737, and I should say, 737 more that are expected to be approver in some sort of approval process. Well, that's naturally going to grow property tax. And on the one hand, that's a good thing. On the other hand, it's not a good thing. Because unfortunately, at 21 cents on the dollar, that does not cover the cost of providing services to a new home, a new home that comes into our community. It isn't. To raise just $74,000 in property tax, we need 100 new single-family residents, residences, homes, property. So while that serves as a way to raise additional revenue, the problem with property tax alone is it doesn't pay the bills. So what do we supplement it with? We supplement it with things called community facility districts. And community facility districts were an early answer, refined over time, to Proposition 13, which limited the amount that property tax could increase every year. And so a properly financed CFD can provide revenue needed to bridge the gap between what property tax may pay for and the services actually rendered. And services rendered can be parks, they can be maintenance at parks and landscaping, it can be police services, it can be maintenance of streets and roads, it can be anything. And typically, when you're setting up a CFD, you're having a fiscal impact statement calculated for you. And you have it calculated independently. And it comes up with that CFD figure. And that figure is the amount of special property tax, essentially, that gets assigned to a piece of property. And it is supposed to bridge the gap. And it's usually based on a subdivision and how a subdivision is going to build out. And you're, you know, it takes working with the developer to figure all of that out. But ultimately, the property owner pays that CFD fee over time. And so that is something we could think about for the vast area in our community that was built prior to Prop 213 and does not have CFD or lighting landscape districts overlaying it. And so those several thousand homes are not paying into the maintenance of parks in the same way that some of our other residents are. And so that's a possibility. But because this is information, as opposed to a specific proposal, it takes additional review and analysis, how that could be applied, what the amount would be, and it would require a vote. And so it's long-term because there's a lot of work to do. The next idea would be a parcel tax itself. You wouldn't necessarily have to rely on just one area of the community. A parcel tax would be community-wide. They usually don't raise a tremendous amount of money because the proclivity is to keep them as low as possible, as low as is acceptable to a community willing to vote them in. And they're long-term because the soonest this city could ever vote on a parcel tax is the general election of 2020. But by way of example, $100 added to each parcel in the community would raise $790,000. Or if it was done on a percentage basis, .01% of the parcel value, it would then be calculated on an increasing rise in value every year, would raise, under current statistics, about $217,000 for that .01%. Another idea is TOT tax and raising that. GALT's rate already is 10%. Other cities in the county are 8%, such as Folsom, I think 10%, Ileton, 12%, all the other cities in the county. But as we see down below, what are the potential impacts of this information? Every 1% increase equates to about $30,000 in tax. So usually, TOT, because it isn't going to raise a ton of money in a community like us, is, if it's raised, it may be targeted at economic development-type ideas or, you know, targeted to specific business-related needs in a community, funding promotion of community. Again, it would require a vote of the people. And the soonest you could do that is the general election in November 2020. Sales tax, we've done it before. Our current sales tax is 8.25. It's the state 7.25 standard sales tax. And then half a cent, or half a percent for county Measure A, a transportation tax, and half a percent for Measure R, which helps fund our police department. But that second sub-bullet, GALT's average sales tax per capita is $90 annually. The average is 202 in the county. We suffer from sales tax leakage, largely because studies show that in communities like us, when people leave for work in the morning and they're going out, whether it's up to Sacramento or the Bay Area or down south, a lot of times they do their shopping when it's convenient for them to do that during the day. And by the time they're driving home, they hit the garage door button in the garage door. They're in for the night. Doesn't mean they don't go out on Saturdays. But for communities like GALT, where more people exit the city to work, it's a lot more difficult to capture a higher level of sales tax. But a .25% sales tax increase would raise $770,000. But again, a vote, November 2020, would be the soonest that this city could consider anything like that. So it's long-term enhancement. GALT market, as we think about that. And so the GALT market itself has restrictions. And the reason why this city so long ago made the determination to fund its Parks and Recreation from the market was really a fact of this decision being made for the city by the legislature. And AB 3773, I believe, was passed in 1981 or '82. And it generically requires that all the income from the market be used for Parks and Recreation. Well, back in the day, that was a lot of money. It was, and it was a lot of money in support of the general fund. My recollection is that when I was here in the early '90s and oversaw the market operations as part of my duties when I worked for the city then, the income, we took the income from $1.4 million. And two and a half years later, it was at $2.1 million. We had 110% or so occupancy because every vendor paid for the month. Because if they didn't pay for the month, they could lose their spaces to some other vendor on the waiting list. We had a waiting list that had over 1,000 vendors on it at one time. And why did, why could we possibly go to 110%? Well, that was because vendors would pay for the month. But if they decided to go on a vacation and weren't going to be there, their spaces were resold for that day to a long line of trucks, most of which would get turned away when we were all full up. And yet, something's happened over that time. We have seen the advent of a lot of things, more convenient shopping. And I know that there's debate about whether Amazon plays a role, or eBay plays a role, or just being able to get on your cell phone now and make your order at Walmart or Rayleigh's or Save Mart and drop by and pick it up at a scheduled time has intervened in people going to the market, or whether it's generational, whether a new generation has not necessarily been brought up or knows about the GALT market in the same way that maybe their parents or their grandparents would like to come to the market. Maybe it's just fallen out of fashion. We would probably have to really study that to figure it out. But we know that over the last 15 years, we've lost $1 million and that our overall Parks and Rec budget has grown. So what we've done recently, with no instant threat to the market, is that we've engaged a consultant through a grant we received from the California Energy Commission to take a look at a community visioning program for what this whole area here, the market, these grounds, the softball complex, over, even talking about including the Fair Site School site, what could that be morphed into? How can we make this area more attractive? Something that could potentially, or could we even do it, that would potentially provide income, a more steady, stable source of income that could be dedicated to Parks and Recreation on the order of AB 3773? How could we do that? Can it be done? What's the community's vision for that? And so over the course of the next six to nine to 12 months, we'll be out with the community, holding public meetings, talking about that. We have a, we've brought in a developer who develops types of regional centers and places that create that kind of energy, whether it's a mix of housing or whatever. They are sitting there and they're going to watch what our community comes up with. And they'll make a determination about, based on what the community comes up with, could they envision a plan? And so it's all just, it's an idea. It's something funded for us by the state. But maybe it will provide us a pathway to either the reinvigoration of the market or the inclusion of other opportunities to complement the market and direct funding towards our Parks and Rec programs. All that is to say that my second sub-bullet, the last bullet on that slide, I think is important, that whatever we think we come up with, we have to do a risk assessment. Because the last thing we want to do is rush headlong into something that is ill-advised. And so we really want to take a look at our market, understand that if our market remained what it is today, is there a way to take those revenues back up? Hope, by the way, is not a strategy. I'm talking about a risk assessment that evaluates whether or not that's really true. Not that we hope to have it be true. Hope is not a strategy. And so those are our market revenues, and it's a pretty telling tale. 2005 on the left, 2019 on the right. We see that it was over $3.5 million. And we note this decline. Now, you heard me mention a minute ago, Amazon, Walmart, eBay, any online shopping. Well, those organizations, basically, Amazon and eBay. Amazon started in 1994 in Bellevue, Washington. eBay was started in the state, or yeah, state of Washington, no, San Jose, I think, as well, in 1995. And they started out, but it wasn't until the early 2000s that they became profitable. And they then began buying up the internet advertising end of things. And they began to figure out how to use the internet to continually appeal to users who searched for this, that, or the other thing, categories of items, not always necessarily specific. And so when we see the market in 2005, really, those companies were just hitting full stride. And look at where they're at today. Now, that may just be anecdotal. It may be empirical evidence that doesn't relate to a $1 million slide in our revenue. But it probably shouldn't be ignored either. And so when I talk about a risk assessment, we really need to figure out whether or not that can be stopped. Other potential revenue sources, you know, staff is continually talking and coming up with ideas that we pick up from other communities. And things like a property-based improvement district, a P-Bid. Usually centered around a business improvement district, where the business owners agree to a added taxation that then gets used within that district to make it come about. Businesses in the chamber probably know exactly what I'm talking about. They may not like the idea, but it's information. It's not a specific proposal. The electronic billboard is a specific proposal, though, to deviate a little bit from the norm because the council recently provided us direction to move forward. It's a placement of a billboard on Highway 99. It'll be an electronic billboard. And we'll bring in a minimum of It'll be an electronic billboard, and we'll bring in a minimum of $100,000 a year annually to the Parks and Recreation Fund. So that is something, we're working through all the mechanics of that. If we're able to get through all the agreements with the vendor, we anticipate being able to consummate that deal. And so, that is a one pinpoint of light in this presentation. But fear not, there's a couple other pinpoints coming up. Revenue from annexed businesses, that is actually a bit of a pinpoint. I'll show you in just a few minutes how that has benefited us this fiscal year, this new fiscal year. So now, we're going to move to some of these midterm. There's just a couple slides here on midterm revenue and midterm expenditure cuts. We'll cover revenue first. And so, some of the things that we have to do, it's never popular, it's never popular with the development community, it's never popular with the residential community when we begin to take a look at our fees for service and try to comport those fees with the actual cost of providing service. And so, we can do that on a number of levels here in our city. One of those areas is to take a look at the fees for Parks and Recreation programs. You're not going to see, and you haven't seen in your staff report, and what has been provided to you and the community last Friday, many cuts of actual programs, recommended cuts on my part for actual programs in Parks and Recreation, and that's really only because I think that it would have to come with a harsh morning light review by the city council at what we charge for our recreation programs. How far are we willing to subsidize those, and how can we reach a balance? Or can we? That's really the question within the community, given the programs we provide and the very substantial losses that we incur on those. And then, cost allocation. Attached to the end of my staff report is a staff report that was provided to us by the former finance director of the city and former accounting manager of the city, who did a, came back and did an analysis of our cost allocation plan. And so, the council is aware of this, the community may not be so aware, but in 2017, the city embarked and had a new cost allocation study done. And really, a cost allocation study is about figuring out that for all the, the General Fund generally funds almost every service in our city, except for what restricted funds provide. But you don't have an accounting department for a restricted fund, and you don't employ a payroll technician for a restricted fund, and you don't employ a city manager for a restricted fund. What you do is you recover the services rendered to those other funds by people funded in the General Fund, so that potential Parks and Recreation programming isn't paying for brand-new development, or other things like that. And so, the cost allocation plan is a methodology to reasonably recoup the cost of services extended to those other funds by the General Fund. And that new plan in 2017 was completed, it was implemented, and my conclusion is that it was inadequately implemented. It was inadequately implemented because about half the plan was implemented at one time, and the other half wasn't. And we can get in and answer any questions about the particulars of that, but when we did a comparative analysis of what we were doing before, we found that the measures under which we previously recouped revenue on behalf of the General Fund were, while perhaps adequate in a general sense, were not as specific, and they may not be as adequately tailored as they should be. And then, another piece of it is direct charges. So if one of our engineers who's funded out of the General Fund is doing work on a wastewater project, he's tracking his time. And back in '17 and '18, we're concerned that that wasn't implemented the way it should have been, or as robustly, and we have evidence that indicates that it may not have been. And so, we've made some modifications. The report provided by Ms. Kiriu, our former finance director of 28 years and many, many, many a balanced budget, concludes, at least based on our analysis, that at least $183,000 can be recouped to the General Fund by changes we've already implemented. In her report, she has recommendations, and we should follow through evaluating each of those recommendation areas to see if there's anything in addition to that $183,000. Because for every dollar that we fail to recover back to the General Fund, we foreclose on the ability to provide services to our community, and we ought not do that. So expenditure cuts midterm. As the council's aware, we're a service organization. We don't produce the widget, the ubiquitous widget. We provide services, and so 71% of our budget is employees. It's all related to providing services, whether it is a police officer, or officers on the street, or a Public Works employee out fixing the street, or a finance team taking care of keeping all the accounts straight, or it is HR hiring and making sure that we have enough employees to keep the operation running. 71% of our budget goes to, of our citywide budget goes to employee compensation. And so, the council has asked previously, you know, as we look at the possibility of having to really trim back costs, how do we do that with respect to our employees? Because we're the private sector, we're the public sector, not the private sector, there are certain requirements in the law that we have to follow. It doesn't work the same as it perhaps would at the business down the street. Value of furloughs is essentially 10%. It's really 9.62351%, or something like that, but it's almost 10% of pay, and the value of that in the police department would be $412,000. The value of that in the General Fund would be $370,000, and Parks and Rec, $77,000. Read the fine print, please. It requires that we meet and confer, that we negotiate with our labor units in accordance with the Myers-Mileyus-Brown Act, as adopted by the state of California. Similarly, if we were to take a look at a delay or elimination of COLAs, which are next, the last set under the MOUs, as I understand it, are set to be provided on July 1, 2020, so the first day of the next fiscal year, next year, the $113,000 in PD, $83,000 in the General Fund, $17,000 in Parks and Rec, and that represents a 3% pay increase in police, and a 2.25% pay increase for others. Again, requires meet and confer. So when I talked earlier about oftentimes you have agreements in a city, and when you have a settled agreement, you have at least two parties to that settled agreement. So two parties need to agree. Employee layoffs are a possibility. I don't recommend it, but they're a possibility. It's information, not a proposal. Information, not a proposal, but they are a possibility, and those can be implemented with meet and confer, but not necessarily meet and agree. And then, as we move to the future, you know, employee compensation and benefits clearly require collaboration. We are mandated by the law to negotiate in good faith. Each time a union contract comes up, we have to negotiate in good faith. We don't have an option. We can't say no. We must negotiate in good faith, and good faith does require the trading of proposals. And so, amongst a whole lot of other things. But we want to develop, as we look at how we may end up dealing with the workforce in this city, we still want a workforce here, so we've got to consider that, and yet, we have to consider the tough nut we have to crack over the long term in being able to meet our expenses. And so, this is midterm, because these aren't unilateral actions. So now, where everyone probably wanted to get to very quickly, we'll talk about the cuts that I, you know, or expenditure reductions, really. I might be nuancing that a little bit, but really, they're expenditure reductions in the short term in order to balance our budget. So we have, right now, our services are provided with 152 full-time positions citywide. Of these 13 are under evaluation or frozen, not budgeted. They exist within the structure, but there's no money to hire someone into them. Citywide positions, with the exception of Measure R and water and wastewater, so we have some, Measure R separately funds positions, and the fund is in good standing, and so we have, I think, 10 and 1/2 employees employed in the police department and paid for for Measure, by Measure R. And then, our water and wastewater funds are paid by rates, paid by our rate payers, homeowners, businesses, whoever we provide water and sewer to. And so, in wastewater, there are some state-mandated levels of staffing that you have to have. And so, we have hired employees both in Measure R and in wastewater, but for purposes really of the General Fund and Parks and Rec, we're down 2 and 1/2 positions in the past 10 years. There's currently eight vacant positions in the General Fund that exist right now, today, as we stand here and talk. One in Parks and Rec. And they are part of the 10% potential expenditure reductions that you reviewed on the 17th of July and the 31st of July. Operations and maintenance expenditures, how we carry out our job, whether it is grease for, you know, a well, or, you know, asphalt for the street, or, you know, other things that we need to carry out and affect the services to our community. We really, this city has really been doing an effort over a number of years to hold the line, and in the last four years alone, they have been cutting at a rate of O and M, cutting at a rate of 4% to 7% per year. And so, certain things may get budgeted, but if we don't need to spend it that year, we don't. And if we can cut it, we do. And so, some of the items on my recommended list are operations and maintenance cuts, but I wouldn't want the, either the council or community to believe that there's a tremendous amount of money citywide in General Fund or even Parks and Rec, O and M. And then, capital outlay, so those are projects that we may desire to undertake, expenses that we would otherwise make if, if all things being equal, we haven't been making for the last four or so years, except in emergencies, as a way of saving money. So what does that mean? It means the Littleton Roof is just going to get worse if we don't repair it. It's long past due for being replaced. Haven't had the money, had to make the hard decision not to do that. And so, we want to dig ourselves out of that kind of hole. And so, the budget adjustment target started out at $1.426 million and change. And so, we started FY '20, again, when this budget was adopted in probably May or June of 2018, there was a General Fund deficit, in and of itself in the General Fund, net of transfers of $126,000, basically. In Parks and Rec, it was $1.2 million, and in the lighting landscape districts, it's $83,000. Well, we talked a little minute, a few minutes ago about this $183,000. $183,000. And that's the cost recovery plan, the cost allocation plan, where we realized some things that should have been happening, haven't been happening, we're making them happen now, we have a lot more to evaluate, but right now, the amount is $183,000 that we're recouping. And so, then, we decided to take a look, even though we had done this in April and early May, we decided to take a look at sales tax. Why? Because there's new things happening every day. And we work with a group that collects all of the sales tax data and information specific to business in this community and other communities in the state, and they sort all that and compile information for us to review and use to budget. Now, that's information that is owned by the businesses, but it's information that under a particular section of the law, the state shares with us. And so, what we, since we went through and validated and did some updates to, in April and May, to our General Fund revenues, we have since had a meeting with the sales tax firm, and they were able to highlight for us, or point out for us, some businesses that had entered the sales tax window. Well, how does that happen? Well, it happens when they open up for business, and they've been open for probably close to six months, because everything, the states, you know, it takes many months for the state to process quarterly sales tax returns. It's not instantaneous information. And so, we realized that we had three or four businesses that entered that window that have opened since we did this evaluation, and we realized that a new business popped up, and it was, or a couple, that were as a result of annexation into our city. And those annexations may have occurred last year, but all of a sudden, those businesses were now being reported to the city of Galt, no longer the county of Sacramento. And so, that is conservatively estimated sales tax between now and the end of this fiscal year at $192,000. So when you add the pluses to the minuses, and you, what we come up with is not $1.4 million that we need to cut, but largely because of these two areas, it's a little over $1 million, just to balance our budget for FY '20. And so, you'll recall, on the 17th and on the 31st of July, we went over a whole series of cuts. I had asked the departments, please come up with 10% cuts. Please come up with a backup plan of 20% cuts. We're not sure where this trail is going to lead, we're not sure where we'll end up, we may need to be making, you know, very significant sacrifices. Let's develop the information, since we're developing 10, let's do 20 as well. We did it. 10% cuts represented $2.1 million, almost 2.2, rounded. But we only need to cut one, a little over a million, and rounded, it would be $1.1 million. And so, what I have proposed to the council is to free seven vacant positions, to reduce hourly staffing, this is in, some hourly staffing in the Parks and Rec Department, to reduce operating and maintenance expenses, that's that O and M, to about, or buy about $100,000, to eliminate the council discretionary funds, to decrease community promotion expense. And we have preserved a lot of community promotion expense, total's nearly $85,000, because many of those projects are going to happen in the next 45 days. And I wasn't going to do that. The, reduce special legal services by $35,000, reduce, this is capturing the landscape maintenance that you previously enacted with our landscape maintenance changes, and you, that was a decision that we had to make back in June because we had a July 1 deadline for services. To defer some facility projects to the tune of $20,000, eliminate the sports concession, where we're losing money on that concession, to increase the lighting fee for the youth sports up to what it costs to recoup the cost of operating that, to eliminate the adult men's co-ed softball, that's a $23,000 loss in Parks and Rec, and to reduce contingency by $10,000. That all adds up to the $1,500. And to reduce contingency by 10,000, that all adds up to the $1,051 that we need to balance our budget. So, next steps is to evaluate, of course, each of the revenue enhancement ideas will bring back a calendar of events beginning in October and November for the council's review, we might as well dig right into that. The same with the midterm expenditure reductions, October and November, dig right into those things. The short-term expenditure reductions are set for your consideration, and that will come back to you for action on September 3rd. And so, with that, I have really concluded the substance of my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the council has. And, here we go.
Yeah, lots of questions, so. So, real quick, the 183,000, so that's what we were able to recoup from the cost allocation? Those were errors we found in the?
What I would say, yeah, it was a failure to recapture.
Right. So, is there any chance we can go back and look at previous years and recapture more than that?
Yes, we can take a look. What we want to do, that's one of the recommendations in the previous finance director's cost allocation report, and I think it's actually the 14th recommendation, and what we want to be able to do over time is take a look at the, try to test materiality. And if it's material, if we're going to spend a bunch of money chasing $5,000, we probably wouldn't want to do it. My guess is that we, based on what we found for FY '19, I'm highly suspect that we'll find more, certainly in '18, and very likely in '17.
Right, and this is a cost allocation plan that was put in place by the previous city manager in 2017, correct?
Right, and it was the immediate past finance director, not to be confused with Mrs. Curio.
And so, the, so the 183,000, that was just from this last fiscal year that was recaptured?
From F, it's recaptured in this fiscal year, FY '20, sorry. I may have missed, I may have said 19 earlier.
Not even a full fiscal year, just part of a year?
No, it's extended out for the?
Oh, you're for, okay, you found the errors and you've corrected them going forwards.
Well, it's actual, it's actually actual dollars we found right now. I'll let Claire, she did the math.
So, the calculation is based on activity from the prior fiscal year that indicates how the new year will go, along with additional information that we have. So, the 183,000 is for the entire 2019-20 fiscal year.
Okay. So, just so the public understands, this is money that should have been recouped by the general fund from other funds that was not, because of the formula or calculations that the old, that the cost allocation that Will Dan put in place, that's what?
Well, yeah, so, very briefly, I'm going to say two things real quick. One is that, for the cost allocation plan, you have this indirect allocation methodology. And if you went to Inez's report, and you looked in the middle of it, there's a chart. And on the right-hand side, that's the, is the Will Dan methodology, and so, it has, we operate a model that's based on the drivers listed down the right-hand side of that page, and that calculates the indirect cost of the extension of services for central service departments. We also have, cost allocation plans have, a direct charge component for those things that wouldn't otherwise be captured by an indirect methodology. So now, think CIP projects, where you have a general fund engineer working on a wastewater project, and doing work on either design, or managing something, or doing something on that wastewater project, that we want to capture his actual hours, or her actual hours, so that we can direct bill wastewater fund, or the water fund for those services rendered.
So, what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing is basically, the cost allocation plan that we were using was basically contributing to our deficit, at this point, to the tune of $183,000, right?
Yeah, I would say that it wasn't recapturing enough, and so, if by extension, you know, you want to conclude that the deficit was $183,000 worse, prior to identifying that and recapturing, sure.
So, a couple other comments, and then I'll give some other time to the council, if they have questions. So, your presentation was very long, and so, a lot of things crossed my mind, and I've tried to jot down notes and stuff, but, you know, to me, I mean, clearly, the parks and recreation, aside from the lighting and landscape districts, clearly, the driving force behind this is the money that we contribute to the parks and recreation. That's what's making our budget out of whack, that's the main contributor.
Hmm.
But what's interesting is, and I know that doesn't change the situation, and I'm just putting this out there for people to know, what's interesting is that if parks and recreation was a fund from the general fund, like it is in most other cities, we basically, the 1.2 million that we chip in is basically 8%. It would be an 8%, it would be an 8% draw from our general fund. So, which is really in line with like four other cities I looked at that are paying about 12% to 13% to their parks and recreation. So, I'm going to a narrative here. So, what I'm getting at is that, the ideology that, that the general fund, that we have to put in money to, no parks and recreation pay for themselves. I mean, if you had a city that all the parks and recreation pay for themselves, you'd be the first one probably around, there's no such thing. So, what has happened is, to fix this, obviously, we're looking at parks and recreation, but really, what's caused this, in my opinion, is the rest of the city has overspent, and now has caused, got us into a position where we can no longer afford to essentially have a parks and recreation department, more or less, because that's what's, a normal city would have that already, a piece of that pie, but we don't, it's a separate fund. We've expected it to pay for itself, which it has for many years, but we were really just lucky, because nobody else has a flea market. I mean, you're talking about how much money the market makes, you know, that it made a lot of money. Well, you know, 18%, so it's the second biggest, it's tied for the second biggest contributor to our revenues. So to me, that's still a lot of money. I mean, second, it's the second behind, it's actually equal with sales tax. So we act like it's, you know, it's just not doing its part, it's not whatever, and it's declining, we all accept that. What frustrates me is that, and this is not any doing of anybody here, this has been, obviously, something that's been building for a long time, but what frustrates me is something that's what I would consider the golden goose, that's provided 18% and allowed us to have our recreation and all the parks. We've basically just become complacent, and we just let that goose out there. We didn't take care of it, we didn't have the vet come in and look at the goose and make sure it was healthy and all that. We just let it do its thing, and now it's sick, and we're like screwing around trying to figure out what to do. It's just, it's frustrating to me, because I think essentially what we're doing is, we're just, we're looking at, everything on that list, everything except three items on that list right there has to do with something that's taking away from the public, or increasing something on the public. Almost everything except three items up there. Other than the reduced legal, the, even the discretionary funds, the 5,000, I mean, that's not money that the council goes and just goes out and parties with. Most of the time, we give that back to the community in forms of nonprofits and other, yeah, exactly. So that's really money from the community there. The hourly staffing, you know, you can kind of call that a cut from the city, but really, it's kind of like, you know, we're cutting somebody's job, some low-level, part-time worker that's going to get their hours cut back, that's what that is. The freezing of the seven positions, where all those are going to affect the community, because those are PD and, and, well, most of them are, three, one dispatcher, two B. So, when I look at that, it's frustrating, because I see what we're doing, it's like, you know, if I, if my personal budget in my home is over, I don't go to Little Johnny and go, we're not going to be able to have pizza this week, or we're not going to be able to have swim lessons anymore, we're going to have to figure out where we're going to cut that. And I've got the Mercedes sitting in the driveway, and I'm going to the country club, I got my country club membership. So what's happening is, we're spending, we're overspending in the rest of the city, and it's costing the community in the form of now we're having to look at major cuts in parks and recreation, one of the main things that our community uses. You know, you mentioned core and non-core, so you're right, core is the things we have to have, and non-core is those amenities that we'd like to have, you know, the parks, and the green grass, and the sports programs, and all those great things that we'd like to have, but the core is the things we have to have. But the problem is, how you spend for those core makes you be able to afford those non-core. And so, again, I use the analogy I just made. You know, I'm not going to go and cut, you know, all the fun things that my family does, because I had decided to go out and buy a Mercedes and upgrade from my Honda to a Mercedes, and now I can't really afford that, so now the whole budget's out of whack, so I'm going to have to go and cut all the fun stuff out of it. That's the frustration here. And we need to be looking within, and I'm happy to see some things on this that are definitely cuts. And I, you know, this is the report from last year, you can see on my little post-its, I used a whole thing of them, and I also mentioned this binder too. These are all the things I had questions about, and the things that I would cross compare and look at, and there's just money all over in there. And I'm looking at things like, on this list right here, like cutting a $500 bounce house for opening day. Now, do we need a bounce house for opening day at Parks and Rec? No, we don't need a bounce house. But you know what, that's $500. I mean, there's things in here that are 20,000, 30,000, 7,500, I mean, just, you just go on and on. So we can't find something else in here, so the community can keep the bounce house? I'm not saying that the bounce house is worth saving, I'm just giving you a comparison. So my frustration, to be honest with you, I'm pissed off that I look at this, that I, all I'm seeing is, take from the community, take from the community. We have to do something, but the frustration for me is that, that we're in this situation, because what we've done is we've got comfortable and it's overspent for so many years, that now we're in a position where we just have to take all the fun stuff out of the community and lose, like Mr. Haglen said, our identity. We're going to go bound just to core, we're just going to have city hall and public works, and that's it. There's going to be no fun stuff in town, there's going to be no parks, no anything like that. You know?
I don't think that anything that I've proposed is that dramatic as you're stating.
Well, that's not what I hear from the community, I'm just saying, and I applaud you, Tom.
I'm just looking, I'm thinking just about the list, you know, if we could scroll down that list, and not a single kids program was cut, not a, not a single park has been closed.
No, but you got raising the lighting, so I talked with Armando, that's going to be about another $10 on every person that uses, every kid that plays, it's going to be about $10 per player to recoup those lighting costs, so, because the city can't afford to turn those lights on without recouping that cost. And, and all these, I mean, there's several things in here that take money from the community, I mean, that's all going to trickle right down.
Any, any, any cut, any cut is going to reduce something from the community. There isn't a separation of, this is what we do, and what we spend that is non-community related. That doesn't exist anywhere in the budget or the structure.
So, our market makes X amount of money over the years. What has happened is, we've, we've created more things that take away from the market. We've said, oh, let's build more parks, let's do this, do that, and slowly, because I was noticing something in here a minute ago, I was looking in the, actually, in the financial report, and it says expenditures rose 9.4%. Government activities expenditures rose 9.4%. But yet, market, parks and recreation and market expenditures went down 0.4%. So they actually started spending less, but government activities went up. So, as you can see, like I say, what would happen is, that bigger piece of pie, which is everything else except parks and recreation, has grown so big, there's no room for that piece of pie anymore for parks and recreation. And the last note I want to make before I jump off somebody else, is, we have to chip in 1.2 million, right? We also collect 900,000 in service costs. So if we were just, say, eliminate parks and rec tomorrow, just say, let's just do it with the whole thing, we would not have to pay that 1.2 million anymore, it'd be gone. But we also wouldn't be getting the 900,000 we get. So the net gain to the general fund is only like 300,000 there, am I wrong?
Yes, I think you are. And it may not be that the entire 900,000 would be eliminated, but a very significant amount would be, because the, to eliminate all of parks and rec may trickle down to other departments or central services that don't need to be either staffed up the way they are, or the expenditures wouldn't be as high, and it would relate to a comparable reduction in the overall central service cost.
All right. Mo, my rant's over for the moment.
I look at it a little differently, Sean. You know, and you point, and you do highlight that the city has become accustomed to a certain amount of revenue by, generated by the flea market. You know, but the simple fact is, as Tom has pointed out, in the last 10 years, 15 years, it's dropped a million dollars. Now, I don't think that's for a lack of staff trying to address that concern, because I know it's been an ongoing issue, but it has slowly slipped. And you look at the graphs, you can see in '08, there was a significant drop. Well, I don't know that the city's ever been able to fully recover from that recession. So, I don't think that the cause is the revenues going down and expenditures in all other areas of government going up to cause the issue of the deficit that we're in. The plain simple is, revenues are down at the market, we did a significant change to the cost allocation plan in '17, which resulted in about a million dollar swing to the general fund, million plus. You combine those things over a period of time, that brings us to today. I, I think that, you know, as Tom also pointed out, you know, you, when you handpick and you look at certain line items that are, you know, identified for reduction, or increases, or, you know, to allocate more appropriately to offset this deficit, it is all public service, like Tom said. 71% of the city's budget is personnel. It is providing police services, it's providing public works. So, you, anywhere you cut, there's going to be a service reduction to the public. And I understand your passion for parks and rec and youth programs and so forth, but I believe also that Tom was well aware of that when he brought this forward, because he didn't cut those, based on, I know, the comments that you've made in the past. Nobody likes to see this, but I think it has to be addressed, or we will continue down a path that would be financially devastating to the community, and result in complete losses of services, and mandatory cuts in service levels, whether it's parks and recreation or others. So something does need to be done, as unpopular as it is.
I would like to make a, you know, short comment on, first of all, Tom, thank you for giving us a presentation. This is the time, it's need to make a cut. This is, I think, very clear with everybody. We are going to, in a negative, we have a deficit in a budget. Same thing when we're running a house. But my thing is, why we this thing in 2019, why we cannot see that back in four years ago? It's no matter who was the council before, it's no matter, every council is elected by the people. Their responsibility not look for a year-to-year, they look at advance. They have to look at the tunnel, the light in the tunnel, so how we can make a budget. And this, especially on this, you see that $183,000, we did recoup from the allocation, right? And this was the mistake. And same thing Sean said, we might be find a more mistake on that. On this report, the other thing is, $192,000, we just get, is from the business. So what we see, and it might be a two or three business, right, recently opened it?
I think it's probably four or five in total, yeah.
Yeah. So you see how important business, how we can get the revenue. It need to be very friendly to the business. If we increase our general fund, and this all this problem, if we have a healthy general fund, I don't think so we can have a problem with money going to park rec, or money going to landscaping. We all working is in one part. And I'm talking about, this is, this is a very important. If we are not friendly with the business, if we're going to do the business away from the city, how we can survive? It's no matter where, we can make the cuts. The other, my question is, when any company going in the negative, what you do? What do you do? You do look at your employee, you look, go to the furlough, you go reduction in hours, and then you do access your staff, right? This all are very basic. I'm not telling, or I'm not suggesting we have to do here, but that's a very basic principle you do on your business, or you do any business. So this kind of thing, we need to, the only thing in this, I'm talking about, you, I know the staff make a 10% cut previously, and I believe when they make a 10% cut, you know, I don't talk to the director, but they might be feel very safe, they're not jeopardize any safe, you know, safety and security and any service, but they, they was kind of 10%. But I believe you come up with a much lower figure than what was proposed. So, so the other thing is, the only thing, you know, there is- the other thing is, the only thing, you know, there is some services, like in program. This program never going to go back. This program have to give to the public. This program have to give to the citizen. It, you know, if these program, the program to the youth, the program to the kids, if we can, you know, going to cut this program, and I'm, I'm not with that program. Yes. There is when any organization, any going to the, we need to make a cut where is needed. Thank you.
I just have a couple of comments. I really want to hear from the public who've come in and want to speak tonight, to hear their input. I have received many emails, text messages, telephone calls over the last several weeks in regards to this. One of the things that I hear over and over and over is the interest in continuing to ensure that our public safety is, is protected to the, to best of our ability. Just, I think we all received an email this, this morning from someone stating that. And so that's, that's kind of been a reoccurring theme. But also, you know, the interest in, in, in our lighting landscape zones and, and making those kind of bounce back and do what we can to do, to bounce those back, as well as the interest in the youth sports programs and such. One of the things that, thank you again very much for the presentation, Tom, and I, and thank you for the time. And I don't know that the public always hears this piece, but thank you for taking the time with me personally, one-on-one, as we were going through this process to help me not only understand, but to listen to what my interests were about what I was hearing from the public. And I, I really appreciate that. One of the things that, and I don't mean to, this, I don't want this to sound like I'm, I'm harping on anybody or, or speaking a will of anybody. But one of the things that I mentioned a couple of meetings ago was reaching out to our employee groups, not, not for our midterm cuts. And maybe I wasn't clear when I was talking about reaching out to the employee groups about what could be cut, or what, what they thought they could do without in the workplace. And I was more speaking of the short-term types of things like that are on your list here today. And so maybe I was misunderstood when, when, when I made that comment. I really wasn't asking to go and ask to open up negotiations for, for cost reduction. And so I hope that that is something that we can do even between now and next week to see if that, if our, if our list can be readjusted at all. I mean, I, I think we, we need to look at take-home vehicles for employees, and that might be more of a midterm thing. But I, you know, we could throw that into the short-term. And just a couple of other things, like ideas about staffing levels and how that could affect reduction in staffing levels. One, someone told me about the reduction of staffing levels at the market to clean the market instead of having 10 employees with brooms and, and dust pans. And I, and I say that because I think that's what we're talking about, how it's cleaned out there. And then maybe using a street sweeper instead that would take less time and possibly reduce. So those are just some of the ideas that I've heard. But again, thank you. And this isn't pleasant. And I, and I appreciate your, your, your list. It is reflective of some of the things that I had heard in the community that were of interest. And I'll tell you, I look at, I've spent many years of my time, at least in the last eight years, in the Park and Rec policy decision-making. And it, it is kind of the backbone of the community when you think about that and what, how the community thrives. And so it's frustrating. The one thing that I'm happy to see that's not up here is the closure of a pool or something significant like that, where recovery from it would be so damaging that you could probably never recover, given our, our situation. So I'll kind of leave it at that. I'll talk about cost allocation later in the meeting. But I appreciate your time. I appreciate you listening to us and listening to the community.
Yeah, I just want to thank the staff, especially Claire. And I know this has spent hours and hours on INES. And I did have some comments, you know, why are we bringing back our retired accountants? And, you know, can't Claire handle it? And Claire can't handle it, but she's also putting in about 80 hours trying to get this done. So to be a forensic accountant at the same time, you're just, there's just only so many hours in a week. So.
Well, let me clarify something on that, if I might, since you bring it up. No one at the city, no one at the city presently had ever operated or, or dealt with the Maximus Plan, the previous cost allocation plan, like Ms. Kiryu and Ms. Krug. And so it was, they were the ones that fundamentally operated the program before. It was last operated, I think, in 2015. And so it was imperative to have that level of expertise be able to do a comparison between the two plans.
Thank you. That's why I'm very prudent that they came in. Also, when looking at revenues, when you're looking at some of like the sales tax versus the market, even though their revenues are the same, there really isn't much expense attributed to sales tax, correct?
Sales tax is a general revenue used for services.
So when you, so when you talk about the, the revenue for the golf market, there's also the expense of running the market.
There's an offset.
Is what I'm trying to say. So even though it looks like they're the same, they're not quite when you have how much it costs. And with that, before we have more discussion, you want?
No, yeah, I just have a couple more things.
I was going to let the public know.
I, Tom, when we were looking at the, it was page 19 of your presentation, talked about the property, property tax collected.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's correct, that we collect about 21 cents on every dollar in the old city. I think under the new tax share agreements, we are down to somewhere in the area of around 14 cents, if I'm not mistaken. I think that's based on the annexations because we have to do a, there is no, I don't believe we have a master tax share agreement. I think they're done on an individual basis, aren't they?
We do have a, a master agreement where we've been splitting the county share of general services 50/50. What that overall comes to from the other percentages that are taken out, like for CSD and schools.
Right.
I'm not sure what that percentage.
I think when you take a look at it, it's, it's probably 14 cents or less on the dollars.
On the new annexation.
The new annexations, on every annexation for about the last 10 years, 10 or 12 years. So, you know, all the new development east of the city, that's going to be under the new.
Well, we'll take a look at that. We, I, I think originally we had sourced this information from the assessor's office, but we'll go back and look at that.
Yeah, look at the tax share agreement.
Sure.
And then lastly, I was just going to say, after reading the consultant's report, the former director and accountant, it was very good. I, I, I look at your recommendations and I for one agree with every one of them. So I think there is an opportunity there, like you said, Tom, to increase what should be appropriately charged to other funds to the deficit of the general fund. That's all.
I agree with that. Thank you for that wonderful, long report there. All right. So up, we'll do some public comment and then council can finish. First, we have Patrick O'Flaherty on the Financial Sustainability Plan. Patrick, did you leave?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, I can't read, is this Kami Martin? I can't read your last name, sorry. She wants to talk on the budget?
Thank you. I'm going to have to cut out a little bit because I wrote about both proposals. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council and Staff. As I'm not very familiar with government budgeting, I had to do some research like I usually do. I was able to locate a very enlightening article authored by William Eggers of the Manhattan Institute for Policy Research. He also happens to be a director at Deloitte. And while it's focused on budget cutting strategies for states, many of the concepts translate to the local level. One of the first recommendations is to reduce workforce costs. This includes both, both, I can't talk today, both reducing the number of overall positions as well as eliminating phantom positions. My understanding is that all, the, all, most, if not all of the positions that are vacant have been vacant for some time. Also mentioned is providing incentives for early retirement, such as allowing employees to retire early with full benefits and possible severance. This is one way to reduce the workforce without layoffs. Any people who have downtime during their day should have their jobs restructured to utilize all of their time and talent. Cuts are very easy to find, but they don't necessarily save money because pulling one lever might result in another one releasing. Establish an employee incentive and gain sharing program to encourage efficiency, promote a culture of innovation, and reward employee-driven cost savings. This is something that I am very passionate about. I have a background in lean training, so it's something that I'm aware of. One thing that stood out to me on both the city manager's list of recommendations and that provided by the department heads was that there was not one single mention of process improvement, which I was a little surprised by. Improved performance and savings will follow. Where the cut should be made is not necessarily at the budget line item level, but in the reduction of waste. How do you find these, we ask? And it's already been mentioned by one of our council members, but by going to those who know their roles forwards and backwards, the employees. And while one or two efficiency gains will not make or break the bank, a multitude of them will make a dynamic impact on our budgetary constraints. And if it were up to me, I would delay any decision and go back to the drawing board, as I believe we're leaving way too much on the table by not addressing the inefficiencies that currently exist. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Next up, Chris Brosman on the budget.
Thank you guys again for allowing us to participate in our great democracy. Be honest with you, I don't have anything against anyone up there type deal. I still find it amazing that we gave pay raises this year, to be frank with you, when we knew that for the last several years, I'm learning now that we were in budget problems. I thought the budget problems were related to our false sense of acuity or sense of security and that we were told we had a big surplus by the prior accounting people. And yet I heard tonight that we've known we've had a problem for several years. So I, I echo Sean, but I understand Sean too, that we need to make cutbacks because bottom line, we need to save the money and we need to make the positive side. The other side of that is, I think as a city, we need to figure out a percentage of our budget that we are going to allocate towards Parks and Rec. We should stick with that number with it. Going willy-nilly and going, okay, every time we want to cut back, because we're going to have cutbacks again, guys. If we keep going to Parks and Rec, we're not going to have a Parks and Rec. You know, I heard Sean mention several percentages for other cities. I don't know where that percentage needs to be, but we should come up with a percentage that is going to be allocated towards Parks and Rec because I don't feel that it's fair for us that are paying the taxes to give our employees, i.e. city employees, a pay raise and then come back and ask us for all the cutbacks. I was thankful that Tom came up with, you know, hey, looking at wage cuts. Now, I realize that's 2020 and 2021 and certainly would wish that we could do it in 2019, 2020. But I realize that we do have contracts made with our employees and we need to honor those contracts with our employees. I do want to find out how I can get my property taxes down to $92, though, Tom, because I certainly would love to pay a $92 fee. And I didn't see that one. And I'm going, $92? My God. I think every one of us here would love to pay a $92 property tax. One of the comment, or one of the cuts that you made was, or recommendations, Tom, was Sports Complex and the concession stand. And I did attend the last meeting and I did see the negative $27,000 number that you referred to on your recommendation of cutbacks. But I also did listen to Armando go, hey, we're making money on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, correct? So cutting it out doesn't make sense to me either. Now, cutting it out on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, when we're losing money on it, that makes sense to me. But I think net concessions, if we cut back during the non-popular days, we'll make money on that. So why would we cut it? I know you guys have a lot of decisions, difficult decisions to make. Bottom line, we got to cut money. And that's not comfortable and you're never going to make everybody happy. I respect you guys to make the right decisions on it. And thank you again for allowing us to come up and give the feedback to you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Brosman. Next up, we have Jean Davenport on the budget.
Hi, Jean Davenport. I live in the city of Gulf. Tom, I want to thank you for putting this together because honestly, I don't think we've seen a, you know, a situation quite like this since Ted Anderson was here. And he, and he was the last city manager that sat there and said, he worked for you guys. There hasn't been a city manager since that has said that until he said that tonight.
I'm going to agree.
And I, I want to point that out because we had these two high-paid individuals that talked a lot of smoke and mirrors in what they did. That being said, going forward, I, you know, I understand the reductions that we're going to have to face. We're talking about salaries and this and that. But I think we have to be realistic and honest with the people so they can feel good about what happens to them down the road. You know, you're talking about employees. What about administrative? I mean, can they consolidate a couple of departments for, for a year or two or three or whatever needs to be done? Can you look at administration heads taking a 10% reduction in pay? You know, I understand they just signed contracts, but you're talking about the rank and file giving something up. Let's see somebody else give something up. That being said, which I don't think is going to happen, talk about the taxes, like on the parcels that, that individuals pay and whatnot. And, you know, it's what the citizens pay, but I didn't see anything about what businesses pay. You know, how much is coming in from businesses? Because Walmart is definitely not the answer to our issues, you know? They have not been the cash cow that we said, people said it was going to be. That being said, you know, the lighting and maintenance districts, they've been in trouble for 14 years. Been talking about it for 14 years. You keep kicking the can down the road. And that's, I think, has been a, a problem with past bodies in this city. You just kick it down the road. You put a, you know, you, you put lipstick on a pig, it's still a pig. And that's basically what we did. And I'm not saying, you know, I'm not going to go back and blame other city councils for this, that, or the other. But now we have to face this. Let's get it fixed the proper way. I don't like seeing our grass dying. I don't like seeing citizens saying, let me go mow the lawn. You know, that's not what should be happening here. We're going to have to make some cuts regardless. I think we need to let Parks and Rec do their own thing. That, you know, he just hired a new assistant, I think is going to be beneficial to this city because she has some good ideas, just off of the public statements that I've heard. That being said, we can't afford to cut the police department. What have they done in the last 20 years in this city? They eliminated a gang problem and they're on top of it. So I think what we have is a police force that really adheres to the, to the community. And I don't think we can afford cutting that back. So we have to find money someplace. We have to do things. But, you know, you talk about Parks and Rec and a lot of things that happened. My granddaughter pays $500 to be a cheerleader. That doesn't include the, the, the uniforms and everything else that goes with it. You know, because grandparents and parents have to buy sweaters and sweatshirts because we have to wear the colors too. But, you know, there are things that are going on in this city that are absolutely wonderful. And I don't think we can afford to cut it back. I don't think you should eliminate baseball or softball or COVID. I think you should cut it back to three days a week, period. This is what you have to work with, deal with it. If you're making money at something, if it's three days or seven days, do it. So, I mean, I just think there's a lot of things I don't think we, at least I hope we don't have to make these cuts right away. We can work on stuff. But I really appreciate you putting your time into this because it's, it's really plain and simple for people to look and read. And I appreciate that. So good luck with everything and see you next month or next week.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. That concludes all the public comment, council. I know you have some more. Mr. Lozano?
I do just have a couple more comments really, really fast. In, in Mr. Haglund's presentation, there was a mention of going to the community with a proposal for either a general tax or any kind of tax. There were several options given. And, and again, I know they weren't recommendations. They were just information. They were just information for us to have moving forward. I just wanted to be known that, although that may be the answer, that's going to have to be, at least for me, one of five, that's going to have to be an answer that comes from the public. I think we have a lot of cutting to do. Vice Mayor Farmer mentioned a couple of items in the document in our budget, and I think we could do a better job of really tightening our belts. And so I just want to put that out there that I know I've talked to many people in the community and staff about tax proposals and things like that. And I, just at the core, believe that until government starts taking care of what government needs to take care of, we shouldn't go back to the people for more taxes. There are times when that's appropriate, when a community decides that that's what they want and they want enhanced services from what government can provide. But I certainly want that to come back from the community. Again, from me, I want to talk real briefly about the cost allocation plan, and I thank you for having that report given to us. I looked through it. I would like, and I think Councilmember Campion said it, he said what I want to say, but I want to say it a little stronger. I think that I would prefer that we give staff direction to vigorously explore all 14 of those options and really look at that because whether it's general, because general fund money getting recouped out of specific funds that are restricted does enhance, or not delay, but it makes our general fund problem look a little better. And so if I had the consensus of the rest of the council, that's what I would say is directing staff to really vigorously and aggressively look at all 14 of those proposals and see how we can continue to recover the money.
Would that be immediately, too?
Immediately, yes.
Yeah, my consensus.
And then, lastly, again, I think we have a lot of tightening of the belts to do. I want to reiterate, I think we really, really need to go back to our employee groups and talk about some of the short-term things that we can do in addition to what has already been provided by staff and ensure that we're getting the best bang for our buck when it comes to reductions. It gives me no pleasure being on the council, I think, eight months, having to look at reduction in expenditures. And in my past board that I was on, my first year, we had to look in reduction of services and expenditures. It's not fun at all. But I think as we do this, and I'll just leave it with this, as we do this, as the community, as the council, we need to look at how we recover from this as well as how we're going to reduce. So here, our short term, within the next probably week or two, we're going to be considering formally what reductions to make. And then in the next two to three months, we're going to be looking at some midterm solutions to additional reductions in general fund expenditures. But I think it's going to be important that we continue to engage the community on how, what it looks like when we recover. And so that's important to me, and I think that we really have to ask our Park and Rec Commission and staff what that looks like, our Planning Commission, all of the Beautification Commission, our Commission on Aging, all of the folks that we work with regularly to do that. Lastly, I just have one question for the chief. There was mention that we've had several vacancies for, we've had vacancies in the police department for some time. In the city manager's recommendation of expenditure reductions, the top two recommendations include two vacant police officer positions and vacant police dispatcher position. My question is this. In your tenure, which is about three and a half, three years, three and a half years?
Mm-hmm.
How many vacancies have we carried, not, I'm sorry, not carried, wrong term, how many vacancies have we had during that time in both police officer and/or dispatcher? Not by, not because we didn't want to fill them, but we just haven't because of the process of testing and things like that.
So in the dispatcher area, when we, when I first got here, I think we had three dispatcher vacancies, and we filled it fully staffed. And through retirements and such, we've, in one lateral, we've had to hire some additional. So we've been as high as three, and now we have one. In the police officer positions, I think we've been as high as seven, I believe, since I've been here. And then we had it down, we've had it down as low as three vacancies or two vacancies. So that's about the range in the last three and a half years. And I think that the issue with recruitment of police officers, it's a good, we get 300 applicants. We find one that meets the qualifications out of 300, and that's happening statewide, so it's not just the city of Galt. And so we run these processes continually to hire good qualified candidates. And then, so that's about a four-month process to get them through all that. So it's a very time-consuming process to get officers on. So that's been, that's been our average. We've run anywhere from three to seven since I've been here.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that it? I do agree, if you want a consensus now on getting to work on that.
Well, I have more questions.
No, just on what he had said.
Well, I would agree with that as well, yeah.
Yeah, on the cost allocation, when he strongly urged.
Yeah, I would give consensus with what Rich said.
Kurt said it. Was that all right?
You're referring to the cost allocation memo that's
The direction he was giving, yeah.
Implementing the recommendations, okay. And Councilmember Sandu?
Yes.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
So first, I want, first I want to tell Tom because I kind of felt like he may have thought I kind of was beating on him over there at the podium, but that's not the case. Tom came into a very crummy situation and, you know, and to be honest with you, you know, he could just come in and just do whatever and not be forcing us to make these hard decisions, but he is. And so even though him and I, you know, I get real passionate about things, I really want to dig my heels in on, and him and I, you know, don't see eye to eye on everything exactly. I do always take what he says very seriously, and I know he's, he has the best interest of the city at heart because, like you said, he does live here. And he wants to make sure when he leaves here and that your replacement comes in that, you know, we're on solid footing because he doesn't want to go to the supermarket and have someone accusing him of, you know.
That could happen.
So with that said, I had some questions specifically about this. So in regards to those positions that Rich mentioned, I wasn't aware that there was a dispatcher position. I thought there was a measure R dispatcher position open, but I wasn't aware there was a dispatcher position open in the general fund. Did that get moved over or what happened there? Or, you know?
Chief? I just know that we have a vacancy in dispatch. I don't know what fund it's out of right off the top of my head.
Okay.
I believe it's general fund, though.
Okay. So I'm trying to skip through to the, I have several questions, but I think some of these I can meet with Claire and dive into. It was hard to really kind of look at, I didn't, I wasn't presented with a budget. Our budget about what ended June 30th is not prepared yet. So I wasn't actually able to look at what we spent and where money was actually made. All I have is a projected budget. But there's a lot of positions in here that don't exist. And so I'm wondering if they're in the budget, are we budgeting money for them even though they're not there? Like, for example, assistant city manager, there's some IT positions that I don't think we have. There's a deputy city clerk. I mean, that's not, that's not Tina's position, deputy city clerk, right? Yeah. So, I mean, these are positions that are listed in the budget, but we don't have those people. So.
They're just unfunded.
Yeah. But they're in the budget. So when you say you budget for them and they're listed.
They're not budgeted.
They're not budgeted.
They're not, they're not budgeted. I think that, and that's actually something that we've, at least I identified. And I've run into this before. So sometimes over, you know, the course of cutting, it's always a really difficult process. It's very dissatisfying. And departments, you know, from, not necessarily here, everybody has been very adult in how they have viewed this. But I've experienced in other areas where you, if there is a reduction in the number of staff, they go unfunded. They're pulled, the money is pulled out of the budget because you want to be able to show the budget as having been balanced. If you keep the money in, and then it gets even more confusing. So here, it's pulled out, but the, like I've seen elsewhere, the positions kind of continue to exist because they're historical. And the only problem that I have with that is it's one thing to have them exist on perhaps some sort of organizational chart that HR maintains. It's another thing to have them on the personnel schedule in the budget because it creates the confusion that maybe you're having right now, that somehow there's 13 more positions out there. I think that was the number I talked about. There's 13 positions out there that really are in the budget, and they aren't. And so what we, instead of, sometimes I think it's just sort of a feel-good thing to, well, you know, yeah, we're defunding them, but we're going to identify for posterity that they were there because we may need to come back and make the case that we need them back. But I think that from the tying the numbers, if you will, in the budget, which we always want to do, it would be important to tie the personnel numbers as well.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that. So not to name anything specific, but what I found a lot going through the budget is that there's a lot of, and you have some of them listed on here, and I've kind of added up a few that tend to sum up to some reductions you've proposed. But there's a lot of operations and maintenance things in there that I just think, you know, that weren't on your list that I think that we should be looking at. I think there's a lot of, you know, things that are like 2,500 that maybe we could look at reducing by half or something. I think there's a lot of 500, 1,000, $1,500 items that I think could really add up to a significant sum. And I know that's petty to look at, but I look at them because I look at the list and I see things that are like, you know, something that's $15,000 that I think is important to the community. And I'd really like to try to find that 15,000 in a mix of other things that I really don't think, like there's like, you know, 7,000 in there for postage or something. I mean, it was just, you know, and I know everything, a lot of these I need more clarification on, so I don't want to jump to conclusions. But when I'm looking through, I'm just thinking, do we really need that? Or there's like some trainings, which you, I know you took out some, but I found some additional ones. And I think we need to really look at all that stuff. I think that you've done a good job proposing a lot of stuff here, but I think, you know, this has really opened my eyes looking through the budget about how much, you know, one department or one position can really, can cost. And so I think we need to really look at that and try to find before we just, you know, I think what we're looking through here is a very good list, and I know you've worked hard to kind of take from the department heads, and they've done a good job, you know, coming up with something they feel like they could sacrifice, and it's all been narrowed down here. But I feel like we're still kind of looking with the blinders like this a little bit, and I feel like we maybe should be looking like this. I do agree with Rich, and, you know, no offense to anybody in this room, but, you know, I stood at that very podium last, you know, on May 15th of 2018, and I did not agree with raises that were given out. And I stand that with that today. I just feel like, and that was before I knew we were in the financial pinch run. I just feel like, you know, we need to look at that. And because we would be disrespecting the public big time if we did not consider that. And that goes from department heads all the way through our municipal represented. It's really across the board. We need to look at all that. And I do, I'll be honest, I, it pains me to talk about, you know, the middle blue collar guy. But I think as for department heads, I mean, let's be honest, if we could rewind one year and we had, if we had had Tom here, if Tom would have been sitting in that chair on May 15th of 2008, that wouldn't even have been on the agenda. I don't feel that it would be, and he can maybe argue with me on that, but I just don't think it would be because if we would have known the situation we're in, that would have not been on the table. You know, there were some bumps put out, but I think as department heads, I think that it would be leading by example for us to consider that. And, you know, and I think as a leader, which I think a lot of you are leaders, that's something that, you know, you could lead by example. And so I would, I would like to look at all that across the board. I think it's important that we do visit that. Last thing is that the, you know, the landscaping and all that that the community's really been upset about, you know, that was a hard decision. Look, as Rich said, we've been in office nine months now, well, 10 months. And if any of you think that we wanted to come in here, you think that when I ran for city council, I wanted to sit up here and have to deal with this garbage, literally garbage and all of this? I mean, it's like we got handed a box of landmines. And it's frustrating because for me, you know, one of the things I wanted to accomplish in my term was I wanted to see, I wanted to actually, this is something I actually think I spoke to Tom about, I was wanting to try to create a position that could do nothing but go around and do weed abatement and trash cleanup in the community on a daily basis, like a low-level parks worker or a public works that could go around and did nothing but just pick up litter and just, you know, pull spray weeds and stuff to keep our community looking its best we can. I'm going backwards right now. I mean, not only am I not doing that, but I'm going in the other direction. I'm actually making decisions to, you know, to make things look worse. And so I just want you all to know how hard the decisions and how painful it is for us to sit up here and have to do this stuff. It's not what we wanted to do. It's not. It's tough. And no decision we make is going to make everybody happy. It's going to be tough. So, but I just want to assure everybody that personally, I'm digging. Now, I'm not an accountant, but I can tell you, I've dug very deep and I'm not afraid to ask questions, and I'll be definitely meeting with department heads over the next week and with Tom and trying to get clarification on a ton of stuff I have marked in here, trying to, you know, make the best decision that I can. And I'm glad that you all came and spoke tonight because I think a full room of people speaking about what they feel is important because it's your money, and we're only here to do what's best with your money. And if you don't tell us what you want, and we have to decide, the likelihood of us making the wrong decision or making a decision that you all aren't happy with is more likely. So I value that. And all the chatter on Facebook, I know some of it's pretty negative, but I do read all of it, and it's very enlightening, and it kind of does give you a feel what people feel. So I want to thank you, everybody, for that. So everybody that spoke tonight, thank you for that. So.
The mic watch next is chief. I know there is three position is going to weaken, right? Two police officer and one dispatcher, right? And I do know it is a big decision, and I know. But the only thing, I just want to make sure what level of confidence you feel it will not jeopardize any safety issue on, security issue, in your safety, my safety, or public safety.
Well, I think somebody up there already said it, and some of the public has already said it. We've done a really, really great job of maintaining the safety in this community, eliminating the gangs and doing all of those things. And we've done it with those vacancies. We run a vacancy rate, not because we want to, but we can't, because we can't hire them fast enough. We can't find the qualified applicants to come in and do the job. So we have those vacancies already on in the city now. So I think that my professional opinion is, even with those two positions, two police officer positions and one dispatcher, that we, the level of security and safety in this community will be maintained the same as it is now.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you. The, my next question to economic development, and I look up that Tom make the recommendation is 11% reduction on that budget. And economic development is very important part of the community, and economic development is bringing the business, bringing the general fund, as we talked about last four, five meeting. So how, how do you feel confident on that, your reduction on your budget?
Good evening. Amy Mendez, Economic Development Manager. Thank you, Councilmember Sandu, for your concern. I do appreciate your passion for economic development, and I do think it's important. We talk about sales, tax revenue, and employment base in the community. It is something that, you know, can definitely help change the position of the city moving into the future. As it relates to the budget, Tom and I have talked at length about economic development, and the budget that we carried forward from last year for 2018 actually had a pretty significant amount of professional services that we had replicated for this year, and so most of it is going to come from professional services, which isn't something I think that's going to be necessary moving into the future.
Thank you. The other recommendation is Tom on that park and recreation, sports concession. And I'm certainly, that's my opinion, I will And I'm certainly, that's my opinion, I will not, and you maybe go looking back if we can get that revenue is somewhere else, and also youth sports lighting fees. And I believe in, on, I don't go to detail, but there is some of the department, they only cut 3.6%, 3.5%. So if you can look back on these department, if we can balance from that amount to the other department. Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to piggyback on what he said about those two positions, Chief. So I too, just looking for, you know, reassurances that with those two vacant positions, this is going to in no way compromise our safety because that's important, and I think a lot of us up here, it's a priority, like probably all of us up here, that's a priority for us. And I know you did answer that, and so I appreciate you being candid and straightforward because we're trusting that when you say that, that you're giving us assurances that we will. But I did have a concern about, it says that the impact would be additional overtime, so by keeping those two positions vacant is a $288,000 savings. But how can we calculate, if it's going to cause additional overtime, then we really can't say that that's a $288,000 reduction? I mean, how do we, how can you really put an exact number on that? Tom, would you answer that, or?
It assumes that the overtime would be attributable to those positions. And so we have overtime attributable to any hourly position that we have in the, in this case, in the department. But the chief and I have talked, and in fact, he's working on a plan right now for further reducing some overtime that they have, even though they've been carrying vacancies of anywhere from two to seven over the last few years. There's always room that you can probably work at reducing overtime if you're taking a look at specifically why you need it. Now, there's another thing about overtime. And overtime often is less expensive than hiring a full-time employee.
No, and I understand that. My only, my concern with the overtime is not so much the cost, because I do realize having an employee, there's a lot of things that come with that. But I know when I went on a ride-along a few months ago, you know, some of the officers, you know, we're talking about, you know, 40, 50 hours a week overtime at the time, and I know that the vacancies could have been higher then, but I do know there's a tremendous amount of overtime that's worked by some of the officers, and I know that equates to fatigue and things like that. So I just, it's a concern to always think about overtime to try to keep that manageable because, you know, our offices get burned out, and they can get burned out. I've talked to them, and it's, I mean, I can't imagine that kind of OT. And then, so going back to what we talked about last meeting with the Measure R, you had mentioned about the context of the Measure R being legal for us to fill positions. So if we freeze these positions, do we still have vacant positions in Measure R? And if so, if we found that we do need those positions, whether it dispatch or a couple officers, are we then able to fill those with Measure R and still remain being legal? You told me that as long as we didn't dip below that certain amount of money that was, when, that it wasn't about positions, it was about how much you're spending out of general fund, that's what we, right? So I'm circling back on that. I want to discuss that briefly again.
Sure. So Measure R has a couple of provisions in it, one of which is that we have to, or calls for holding, not dipping below the 2008 level of expenditure in the police department. And we haven't done that. In fact, we're about $1,039,000 more today than we were when Measure R was adopted. And what we're proposing here is not to necessarily permanently eliminate that expense, but to freeze the positions and to not fill them for the time being, for the remainder of the fiscal year. We, $288,000 that, for those two positions, I think it was, certainly doesn't go below that floor of, or amount of the 2008. It's still more than two-thirds of the increase between 2008 and today would remain spent and continuing to be spent by the police department.
So I know there's been a, there's been a discussion over time about the spirit of that Measure R, meaning that we wanted a full general fund before we went into the, into the Measure R positions. And I, you know, and I think that the people that are pointing on the Measure R, and there's a couple of them sitting out in the, in the audience tonight, that I think, you know, do a pretty good job overseeing that, and from what I've heard back from some of them, that I think, you know, that everything is being followed to the, to the, to the letter and the, of the law. I know there's maybe a gray area with what maybe the spirit was or wasn't. But to me, if I have to, you know, sit here and say, well, possibly the general fund can't afford two positions, and right now, Chief is saying that we don't, he thinks that we're okay without those, but at some point, we think we need to, if we have Measure R money sitting there, and that's top sex money that's been collected, it makes no sense to have it just sitting there and not being used. I would very much like to see that used for, say, a dispatcher position, for example, if we feel like we need that. So I think we should utilize those funds. If we're legally allowed to do so, I think we should absolutely capitalize, and those, that's money, that's money that the public decided they were willing to put in for public safety, and so.
I think that as we, you know, move along, as I said, this is not a one-and-done proposition. We're going to be continually reviewing things. We clearly want to stay within the provisions of Measure R. We want to keep faith with the community that provided the Measure R funding. But one of the other things that we, while we talk about all of this, that we ought not do, or get ourselves into the position of handcuffing ourselves, no pun intended, Chief, from, from, from making the type of short-term expenditure reductions that we should be making while we pursue those mid- and long-term plans. You know, Don, I don't know if it's too late to put my PowerPoint presentation up, but, you know, I, there's something I, I want to just recapture here because I think that it's important enough by way of just even information to recapture it and to show the...
It's making my eyes go.
And this isn't to pick on Parks and Rec, but this is, and I heard a comment earlier that perhaps what we need to do is establish what we're going to spend on Parks and Rec on a per capita basis. What is the amount that the city will spend between any fund, you know, any eligible fund, it can be general fund and Fund Six, but from a programming standpoint, programmatic, when we, when we look at it, it's not just recreation programs, sporting programs or swimming, it's also the maintenance of all the facilities. And so we ought to perhaps identify, if this, if this is a trend down and we can't just ignore it, we'd be, we'd be foolish to ignore it. It's a fool's errand to ignore that.
Oh, I, I've never been in favor of ignoring it.
No, 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 and I'm not saying you are, but what I'm saying is, is that we then have to plan for the future because if something, if something doesn't replace that, even at today's level, it will get replaced either by general funds, revenue, right? Putting general fund money in, or it'll get replaced by an expenditure reduction. And so one of the things that we may want to think about, and again, this goes towards perhaps the mid- or longer term, is what is acceptable to the community to spend on a per capita basis for all of our recreation programs, and let's figure out funding around that. Because it may very well be, over time, that there's going to be more and more of an allocation of general fund money to Parks and Rec. But there isn't enough definition to what that means right now to not risk the loss of our general fund if we, if we don't make corresponding expenditure reductions. There's a point at which that goes down and expenses go up, and you have, the lines will cross, and it's a, it's a net loser. And businesses go out of business when they're net losers, and cities can too. And so if we're going to have a serious discussion about providing police services, about providing the requisite finance services, about providing, providing community development and everything else we provide, economic development, by the way, if we're going to have that serious discussion, we have to have a serious discussion about how is it, going forward, we fund Parks and Rec? And do we do things to try to preserve that, but then figure out what is that floor, what is that amount that we're willing to apply from the general fund towards Parks and Rec to have the community that we want? But even that will have a limit because you have other services that you have to provide.
Right, which is why I was making my point earlier when I was, you know, earlier in the evening, where I just feel like, you know, in order to maintain, you know, at some point, we have to ensure that we're going to have money for Parks and Recreation, whether the market's there or not, we have to make sure that we're spending within a certain mean in our other, and to me, I look at like chopping, you know, for example, mint, you know, adult softball, 23,000. You know, I don't play softball anymore, I don't have time, but, you know, that right there, that 23,000, I mean, I can pretty much guarantee you that if the raises that gave out last year wouldn't have been done, that 23,000 could have been overshadowed right there. So that's the frustration I have. I look at this market thing here, and, you know, talking with Armando, you know, I think Jackie Garcia, who somebody mentioned earlier, that's who that person was referring to, you know, I think has done a really good job, she has some good ideas. And I think, I wish that we would have visited, yes, I think we're complacent so long, we should have been really, really working hard earlier on the market. I mean, I would, I know we can't afford it now, but it's too bad, but we really, it's too bad we couldn't hire somebody who was, you know, a business expert and come in and say, you got two years, it's, here's your base salary, here's incentive, if you can turn this, this market around. And their sole job, 24/7, is do nothing but just turn the market revenue around, no other task, no, you're going to work on this, and then you're going to do this too, but just focused on that. I think if we would have done that back when the trend started going downward, instead of just being complacent, we would, maybe we'd be in a different position today. I, I agree with some of the factors you say, we're never going to really know whether market's going down, you know, Amazon, eBay, whatever. But I also know that I do visit other markets, and I see them being very lucrative, and the mark, our market's not. And we don't know that the type of vendors that we started having in 2008 started changing. I mean, there's a lot of variables, I think. I think to just assess it to internet shopping, I think is very, I think it's very short-sighted, to be honest with you.
That's why I recommend a risk assessment.
And I'm not quick, and I know we have these, you know, we have, you know, Lewis Group and, and, you know, that whole thing on the table. But what we shouldn't be doing is something, and to your comment earlier about your, about the revenue, so if we chop that in half, it's still 9%, so it's still the third biggest revenue coming in this general fund. So I don't think we should just write it off because $1.2 million coming in from a source that most of their cities don't have is still a lot of money. Like you've said, it's still equal to our sales tax.
Sure, and I'm not suggesting and haven't suggested writing it off.
So I think with looking at like the billboard, which is something that the council may, you know, we've, we're moving forward on that, and if that's ultimately what we vote for, and we have that, that'll help that. And there may be some other things that we're trying to do to enhance the market, but we really still need to be looking at the market itself. How can we be focusing specifically on that market to turn it around? Because I feel like we're trying to do all those other things, but if it keeps declining and we're trying to do other things, we're just going to be breaking even. So I know this is not the time to talk about expenditures to make the market better.
No, but, but let me just comment on that. This is a multitasking staff, and, you know, I can, I know in talking with our Parks and Rec Director, Armando Solis, with Jackie, we've, I've met several times with that staff talking about how we cut in Parks and Recreation and, and what, you know, what and where, and they've, they've provided a lot of information about expenses and what they're at and where they're at. And I know that Jackie works hard at trying to promote the market, Armando works hard at trying to promote the market. He's a, Armando's a 30-year employee, or perhaps a little more than that, that worked for me that long ago. And he has always been someone who is forward-thinking. The compactors that are at the, the end of the market, that was Armando's idea to cut down on our trash bill. And, you know, we, we put him in back in the early 90s. So that, I know, based on discussions we've had, that he's always trying to think of that avenue to try to get the, more use out of the market. We saw the Taste of the Market series this summer, but just like kind of starting a business in a way. If you divine a different use for that very large market grounds, and you want to fill it, and there's 1,000 spaces roughly, filling 1,000 spaces is really difficult. Filling 100 even is, is, is very difficult. And so it's almost like starting that new business that, you know, you have to go out, you have to figure out who is it you're trying to invite. Our market vendors used to be at our Tuesday, Wednesday market, and they might be up at Denio's on the weekend, they might be at the Stockton market on the weekend. That's the way it was years and years ago. I remember when the Stockton market formed. Armando and I went out there on one of their, you know, first weekends. It was very sparse, but who was there? Vendors that we recognized from our own market, and it built over time. And so that's probably something that we can expect as we try to figure out additional uses for the market on additional days. It's like developing that new product line and trying to get the customers, the vendors to, both, to come in and know about it and shop about it. And what does every business have to do? They start out, they have to invest, they have to invest in themselves. And, and so what we would need to do is invest in ourselves. You know, one of my questions is, do we advertise enough? We had, we had kind of the wringing of hands a little bit when we had a contract up for the group that goes out and makes the ad buys and develops that, that advertising strategy for us. We spend, I think, about $65,000 on advertising for the market. And that might seem huge, but you know what? There is a flea market, for lack of a better phrase, industry association, and they believe that adequate advertising is 10% of your gross revenues. That'd be 250,000 roughly.
Yeah.
And so, you know, what we want to do isn't without a lot of effort and, you know, some expense. And when I was talking about doing a risk assessment of our market, I'm not giving up on the market. I know what it was like 30 years ago. I knew, I, you know, we grew revenue from, during my time here, from 1.4 to 2.1 million dollars. That was in support, at the time, of a $6 million general fund. And that's why the city councils, at the time, because of AB 3773, decided, made the decision at that point in time to fund Parks and Rec out of that money because they needed the 6 million to do other things, to fund a police department, to fund public works and, and all of that. And for a time, it worked until we see the revenue going down. But we, you know, the market was originally developed in mid, mid last century. We got the land in 1951. The market developed organically at some point after that, after going through, you know, the property itself going through, you know, different, you know, rodeos and being a junk pile for stuff that was dumped out there. And when the, when the market got in, in full swing, we went back, got permission to operate it and began to develop it. But it's clearly 40 years old, if it's a day, and the whole notion of what we developed it about is, is, is mid-last century. Do we need a new idea? Do we need a new way to create an attraction that people will come to? Because we can't deny the falloff in revenue, which equates to a falloff in customer traffic. And so we're going to have to think about this dramatically different, and we may need to invest funds. But along the way, we at least need to take care of business today in a way that is not devastating. I understand that these are difficult cuts. Let me tell you, I've made far more difficult cuts than what's before you today, far more significant to the community that it affected. And so from my perspective, as a city manager and 30 years of doing this, these are not excruciatingly difficult decisions.
But as long as they're fair as this, all I'm asking is that they're fair decisions. And what I mean by fair is, like I said last council meeting, that it's a give and take from the community and the city.
I agree.
I don't like to see a lopsided thing where most of it's coming from the community and a little bit from the city. It has It has to be fair, and that's all I'm asking for is equal. As long as I feel like we're making equal, us as a council are making equal decisions that are fair contribution, then I think that, that it's a little easier to swallow. Just so you know, I wasn't, I was, we, Armando and I talked today, I was never in favor of the not advertising the market. The only reason I questioned that is to make sure that was, that money was being spent as best it could for, for advertising. I was never not in favor. I wish we could advertise more. But real quick on the concession stand, so I met with Armando today, and we toyed around with some ideas, and I asked him, you know, what about the idea of a nonprofit running the market, the concession? But it's a little more complicated than that because obviously there's a large cost of just keeping the building open, there's, there's appliances in there, there's air conditioning, which you have to run the air conditioning a lot in order to keep your freezers functioning properly. I know how, all about how that works, having a business. And so there's, there's a cost just having the building open. So even if we were to say, oh, we're going to let a nonprofit pay the city X amount of money per month, then they can run a concession stand, there still is a, a certain cost. So I've asked him to maybe come up with those numbers in the near future, just to kind of get an idea of what that looked like, because before we just shut the concession stand down, I'd like to see maybe, we could maybe just look at how to streamline it. I think, you know, having a, a business, you know, a retail food business, I think I look at it and think that maybe we can just reevaluate staffing and, and things to try to make it at least recover its own. And if it can't, and if we just, and if we lose money, then we just, you know...
It could be that we could rent it out and achieve positive revenue instead of negative.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I think we need to look at a lot of ideas that would be like that, so.
And the other thing I'd just throw out is that of the proposed $1 million in reduction, I think about 65, 68% of it comes from the general fund. Something less than, well, somewhere around 18% of it comes from Parks and Recreation. Then some of it comes from the, the lighting landscape districts, and, and so the lion's share is coming from general fund departments. And of, of that, well, 65%, I should say, is general fund personnel. 65% is general fund personnel, and there's some M and O that's in, in, in the general fund. And so the, the lion's share of those cuts on a percentage basis is coming from the general fund, and of that amount, the lion's share is coming from personnel expenditure reductions.
Sorry, this, Armando, you said the one item that wasn't included in 160,000 that we've already voted on for the, as far as the maintenance, was the $9,215 for the, reducing the tree maintenance. That would be an additional thing, that is not included in the original, right? What we've already passed.
There, there's a tree maintenance contract that we were, we proposed to enter into two years ago. Last year, we had help from a program through the state that allowed us to do that in-house, and we were, we pretty much got the whole city. It's not that we're done, we just need to continue maintaining them, but at this point, we could waive it, you know, forego it one more year. So that's where this cut is.
So it would be money unspent.
Okay, so it's not a reduction in services for our trees, it's...
No, we, we were able to handle that last fiscal year.
Okay, well, that's good to know.
Yeah.
Okay, and all the other, just to recap, so you told me earlier, all the other, like the 65,000, 18,446, and some of the other line items that mentioned, the reduced landscaping, that's all encompasses that 160 we voted on already?
Yeah, so, so you'll see a line item where it describes it as a reduced landscape and tree maintenance. So the tree maintenance is added into that number. We've already reduced the, the landscape maintenance, and that number is reflected in there.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Tom, I appreciate you bringing up the fact that we've got to rethink, and it's not business as usual with the market. Malls, they're not building malls anymore, people, people don't go to malls anymore. So the, the way we shop is changing, the way I shop is changing, probably the way most of you guys shop and the way our children shop, so we've really got to plan for that. Mr. Davenport's chomp had the bits to say...
I had one question I forgot to ask as it pertains to this outline of the expenditures and the budget cuts and whatnot. Do you include, or do you anticipate a cost of any pending litigation or possibility of said litigation that, you know, it's a big elephant in the room? So the, the cost and the liability issue of, of that into anything, or do we just wait for that to happen?
Well, we, the, the costs that have been, or the, the expenditure reductions that have been outlined here are presently budgeted, and so all of those reductions represent a reduction over what we were otherwise anticipating to spend. Future activities, whether it's a lawsuit or whether it's a benefactor providing us $10 million for the general fund, we don't account for.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. I'd heard some, I've heard a common theme tonight where maybe some of the management can talk to some of the employees, maybe they might have some ideas, not, not the supervisors, maybe get down, and I know, I know you guys are busy, but some of them have some really great ideas. I mean, someone mentioned to me, and it wasn't Parks and Rec, but if we did, and I don't know if this is true, but I'm just talking about some of the ideas that some of our employees can have. If we watered in four minutes and then gave it a break and watered another four minutes, it would water just as well as watering longer, so I'm not sure if that's true. But some of our employees have some great ideas, so hopefully they can feel like they can reach through their supervisors and maybe help with some of the deeper budget cuts. And then I also, someone emailed me that, you know, she heard a rumor that we were going bankrupt, and I'm glad she reached out to find that, and basically I told her, not with this council, we are doing everything we can, so.
We presently wouldn't have a case for bankruptcy today, but what, that, that long-range financial plan, that's what you're trying to avoid for tomorrow.
Right, thank you.
I just wanted to mention that when the department head directors came up with their proposals, that included input from staff.
Okay.
So we may not have included every single thing in there, but we collected input from staff.
And, and the other thing I want to point out in particular is that, and he told me this some time ago and reminded me of it now, that the police chief met with every employee in the police department. And, and so, you know, we're happy to go back, and, and we're always open, and I'll talk with the department heads tomorrow at our department head meeting about, you know, making sure that we, that we go back. But I think that the, you know, this, this compilation of ideas came up from the, the, from, from the departments, and to the extent that there are folks that feel like they haven't been touched, we'll go back and touch them so that we can, you know, make sure we're, we're not missing out on a, any ideas.
Great. Good to know, good to hear. Anything else, counsel?
The, yeah, the, hey, you said in the presentation, he said, "Ask questions." That's what he said. I just wanted to say in regards to what he said about the litigation, you know, I know that was the elephant in the room earlier, and, and, you know, just want you to know that a lot of times, if you don't hear anything about trash, doesn't mean that we don't care. A lot of what we're doing is in close session, we have a lot of meetings, Tom does a lot of meeting with cow waste, and although we can't talk about details and all that stuff, it is very much worked on, on a weekly basis, every single week. I mean, we...
Hours.
You know, I mean...
Sometimes on a daily.
On daily.
Daily, and so it's just, the problem is, the circumstances surrounding it just can't come out in an open, and so for that, and it's hard to listen to the comments, and they're, and they're brutal, and, but they're, they're fair, they're fair comments, and, but I just want to let everybody know that we, we didn't just forget about it. This has by far not been forgotten about, it's very much forefront of, of our city manager's job right now and the council. And so I'm hopeful that soon we can come forward with something publicly, but we'll have to see, but just want to throw that out there so everybody knew.
All right, meeting adjourned.